So let's come to order. First order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
What's moving? Okay.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors and members of the public and city staff. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your remark to three minutes. Also, your Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, abdicating from civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints. So with that, I will open it up for citizen comments. There's a microphone in the back there, stand-up microphone. Please introduce yourself, your city of residence. We don't need your address. And remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Welcome.
My name is Kerry Daniel. I live here in Lewiston, and as you probably figured out, I'm a golfer. You can't hear me, I guess. Okay. In nineteen, or 2020, 2002, I retired from Idaho Transportation Department as a project manager for engineering and construction of roads and bridges. And one of the problems we have out there at the golf course, I realize that raises in fees and stuff do need to happen, and they've got some work to do out there, but I would like to address one issue. And nothing against the fire department, this is just something that happened. I was fire department right after I got the Navy. So anyway, that road, entrance road into the parking lot is a disgrace. It is so war-sporty that I'm surprised that the city hasn't been deluged with bills for automobile repairs. But anyway, you can't fix it with a pumper truck from the fire department and a road greeter. I was there the day that they tried it, and it was a joke. I would hope that they can get that paved, or oiled, or straightened out, because it's driving my pickup crazy when I take my cart down there. My ABS goes crazy. But anyway, we had problems with the cart paths out there, and they've got material that they started hauling in in 2014. I asked Bryony at the time what they were going to do with it. He said they were going to fix the cart paths for golf carts. The piles are still out there, and the golf paths, cart paths are still a mess. I think that's two of the main things for the golfers, anyway, to address. If they're going to raise these fees, I'd like to see something done with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Mike Lorenz, 440 Noel Crest Drive. Guess I'd like to give you the latest state of the feedlot address that, you know, what McCann has down there is nothing but an F2 transitional, and feedlots are not allowed. So for about the past two and a half, three years, he's probably brought in over 200 semi-loads of hay to support these cattle. And the only reason that feedlot's operating, because the city in their infinite wisdom is supplying them treated water. I'm assuming that's where he's getting it from, the city. There is nothing on that place 50 years ago, 40 years ago, when Joe and Francis first developed that. And since then, that's turned that into just a big stinking mess down there. You know, the neighbors that border that can't go out and enjoy their porches, and he's turned the lower part into nothing but a junkyard for all his old equipment. And the city seems at a loss about doing anything about it. The last city manager didn't do anything, and the mayor doesn't want to do anything. And so we're stepped looking at this mess day in and day out. I know Cleaver's driven by there, but I think the rest of the city council people should drive by there sometime and see what a fine mess that's, you know, been created there right in the middle of downtown Lewiston. I said, I think this is something you need to do. I mean, we certainly, you know, we don't deserve this. I mean, cows have gotten out, and they've had a dead cow or two, and when they get out, they call the police department, and nothing happens. Well, that's not our problem. So it'd be nice to see one of these days have you people do something about this. And then I guess one other thing I'd like to talk about is that Burt Lips Pool. I mean, the Parks and Rec hasn't really done much to any of these pools with the last Parks and Rec guy or the current one. They just kind of pay a lip service, and we wasted $400,000 on this glorified plan, which is second or third plan on this community park. And it seemed to me that $400,000 would have gone quite a ways to fixing whatever deficiency are in Burt Lips Pool. So now you've got all these kids downtown that have had no recreation this summer because the city fell down and didn't do their job on maintaining these pools, because they always took a backseat to baseball fields and whatever. And, you know, that's just not a good thing. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Captain Cron, Lewiston. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Piggyback on those cows, Mike. They could ship them out there to Hell Gate and help the Corps clean up all that grass. That'd be a great idea, wouldn't it? First off, I'd like to commend Mayor Johnson and Dustin on getting our water back on and the job they did. And you know what? Those lawns are starting to grow again, believe it or not. Nobody died. And guess what? We saved people, the average person in Lewiston, probably $1,500 by water, no water, fees, no fertilizer, no lawn mowing, no bill bug spray. So thanks, you did a good job. We've got a new reservoir. Thank you. I'm serious. Those lawns are coming back. Let's talk about perception of the city. You come into a city, what you see is your perception of that town. And our streets are the worst. And I look at your budget, and there's no question that a majority of our budget should be going to these streets. That should be our number-one priority. We need to use some of that reserve money, some urban renewal money, but something to finish our streets. And we start with Brighton, making it five-lane all the way to Thane, so we don't move the bottleneck down. How about Snake River Avenue down here? The nicest park around. Why would we want to build a community park when all we've got to do is pave that, put in curbs and sidewalks so people can use it? It's a wonderful park. And we can go on and on about, how about painting the lane, turning lane, in Thane? Come on. Widen the paints and put in a turning lane. Stormwater, you know, we pay $40 a month meter rental. That's five, nearly 500 a year, and times 30 years I've been in that, that's $15,000, and they've never had to replace my meter. So why not take part of that money and put it towards the stormwater payment and take care of that problem without raising any more taxes on the citizens of Lewiston? And third, and final, $100 million community park? You've got to be kidding me. You want to talk about stuff that's ludicrous, something that we absolutely do not need as a community park, right? We have 15 parks. We have Kewanas right here, right on the river. We have the walking path. We have the workouts along the Clearwater River. Why on earth we continue to push a $100 million community park when we don't have a decent street in this town? And again, Nesspris County has the highest taxes, highest water fees, highest sewer fee. Thank you for your time. Thanks for serving Lewiston.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cron.
My name's William Stickler. I live at 622 Crestline Circle Drive. Where'd these other two guys come from? You know, this cattle thing and everything is obscene, because our property taxes are severe up there, and we have to sit and smell the cows down there all the time, drive through it when it's in the muddy season. They haul it out onto the road, so when you drive through it to get into your neighborhood, you've got to drive through that stuff, you know? And so McCann, like you said, is building another catch basin of junk down there in the cattle yard now. So all he's doing is depreciating the land that's around there. And like I say, our taxes are severely high. They went up extremely high. And then another thing about the golf course. The golf course has a north side to it on 11, a lane, anyhow, the north side on the back nine. Okay, I live right on the border of that. It's a border land of nothing but weeds this tall, waiting to catch fire. I've lived up there for 31 years, and I have seen it catch on fire up there for, when they had a fire down in the Echo Hills area. It came up over the top and caught that. Now there's houses up there. That needs to be maintained and taken care of. At least put a burn ferro all the way around that thing so they can maintain it. They don't have to do it all, just get that edge done around there 40 feet wide. You know, it's just, and then with the high school, you know, we sold our high school for a million bucks. You know, how many houses in this town are worth a million dollars and are not that size and all that land? You just gave it away, you know? You could have sold that or turned it into something else. And then the new high school. Oh, that was great. We built a new high school. And then what we do? Oh, we don't have enough water. We've got to put a big water tank right in front of it now. Isn't that nice and sweet, how we budget our money? Nobody thinks. You just don't think. You look at us and you'll see, it just goes right by. But that's what it is, this whole town. We make Lewiston beautiful? Forget it. You make all these businesses, put in these trees and everything. Two years later, they're all broken and everything, and nothing's taken care of. So then it looks like, just like 21st Street, all the way in. You just got to maintain and do it, and you can't spend these $100,000 or $1 million projects, excuse me. And so, you know, this is crazy. This is really crazy on how our money's being spent. And then there's a deal coming from the state. The way I understand, the state's going to give back some of those taxes that were given, and it's going to give to the counties. And when the counties do, they have a right to use it the way they want to. How are you going to use this money? Are you going to give it back to us where it actually belongs to? Because we're the ones that are paying the taxes. Or are you going to set it off on some new park, some new this, you know? You need to take care of us, because we're the ones that support this town. Nobody else, us. And a big percentage of this town, about 60%, is retired people. And we're getting a little tired of having to dish out the cash all the time, especially in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
If I may, I'd like to address a little problem that I see. On the intersection of Burl and Tenth has now got a new roundabout. That, to me, seems like the biggest waste of our money that I've seen in a long time. The problem at that intersection could have been solved with four stop signs, a four-way stop, and that would have done it. Thank you.
Thank you. So further citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Next, item four, agenda item four, public hearings and related action items. First item A is a public hearing, Public Works water fees, wastewater fees, solid waste fees, and other public works fees, including encroachment permit fees. Way this will work is we will open the public hearing process, we'll have a staff presentation, we'll accept testimony from the public. Counsel, if you have questions, please ask them during that time, and then I will close the public hearing. So with that, I will open the public hearing, accepting testimony on fees for water, wastewater, solid waste, and other public works fees, including encroachment permit fees. We have Director Dustin Johnson with us here tonight to give a staff presentation. Director, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Here to talk to you about the resolutions that are in front of you here tonight regarding the fee adjustments for water, wastewater sanitation, and miscellaneous engineering fees. Little housekeeping up front. We've broken the public hearings into two separate hearings for Public Works tonight. The first one is the bulk of them you see in front of you. Then there is the separate stormwater public hearing that is a separate stormwater, or separate public hearing tonight. I've done my best to keep them separate, but there is a little bit of reference back and forth between the two, just to show everybody what's encompassing in all of these adjustments that we're discussing tonight. So the rate resolutions tonight, 23-37, 38, 39, 41, are in the order that I'll present them. So I'm just going to go through a little bit about what, how rates are created, what goes into the general funds that they're used for, and kind of a little behind the scenes of what we do for managing our enterprise funds. So generally, water, wastewater sanitation are the big three. Those are the ones that are separate enterprise funds. So when we talk about wastewater money collected from wastewater, those fees by lock and only go for wastewater improvements and treatments and all of those other issues. So these are separate funds. So everything that water operates under is from the generation of the fees, the user fees that people use that for. Public Works others fees, those are in the general fund, those are subsidized by permit fees and the general fund. Those are, user fees go for, you know, like a subdivision, a plating fee, if you're doing an encroachment permit, or something within the right-of-way, or you're cutting into the road, things like that. Those are the fees that I'll be talking about tonight. And then with the asterisk beside it, it's stormwater separate, but that typically has come out of the general fund, and the transportation fund has created ordinance 2880, which created the stormwater, its own division. We'll be discussing that at a later time in a separate public hearing. Just real quick, so typically, those are all user fees. There are grants available sometimes that we can get for improvements if we qualify for them, so those are additional revenue that comes in. We do direct federal allocation, ARPA money, if we have gotten some ARPA money funneled through the DEQ, that we have, was the direct allocation through the DEQ to the state. And then the other way that we make it, what you would call revenue, is private development. So if a subdivision comes in, the developer will come in and put in the water, wastewater infrastructure to the city's standards, then the city will take ownership of that. So those assets then become the city, so, you know, generally that counts as a force, a way of revenue. I have a fireman bringing me some water. So it's kind of a hierarchy of how we, what we use these fees for, or how we operate these enterprise funds. So at the base level is operations, so you've got to keep the lights going, you've got to treat the wastewater, you've got to treat the water, you've got to get it to the people. If you're not doing that, what are you paying your fees for? The next level is somewhat of a new one, with all of the improvements that we've done to the water and wastewater facilities, new plants particularly, new reservoirs. We have debt service, so now we are, we have to run the utilities and provide debt service. So as we're closing out those loans, we'll be having a better, wastewater has been closed out, water will be closing out here soon, so we'll have a better idea moving forward. Then we roll over into implementation, and that's where we implement the rates, we adopt, we move forward, and we start funding these projects. And so if you're kind of following the theme I'm at, we have spent tens of millions of dollars in particularly water and wastewater over the last three years. We're now coming full cycle back into facility master plans. So moving forward into probably '24, '25, you will start seeing new master plans being proposed for water and wastewater, where we'll be looking back at the improvements that we have made, where the health of the overall system is, and where we need to move forward, and what that impact will be on the rates. With all that being said, let's talk about the specifics. So first one up is water. Water is, to be blunt, the utility that is in the hardest condition right now. We obviously have all heard about the reservoir. Additionally, we have had investments in multiple areas of the water plant, the reservoir up by the high school, the new well number seven, the intake, and some of the water mains on Main Street. All of that was forecasted. What wasn't forecasted was the high reservoir, loss of high reservoir. That has deteriorated into our reserves and also has impacted into our, our reserves, and also has impacted how we can project forward. The capital projects that I've got listed there are kind of basically the top of our list that were identified in that original master plan. That's $6.2 million of capital projects. As I've said earlier, we have to keep those, we have to keep the lights on, we have to pay our debt. We know our debt is going to be somewhere between $2 to $3 million a year, probably closer to $3 million a year, and that's going to impact how we fund our capital projects. We know we're going to have to have recoding of some of our other reservoirs, the steel, steel lined reservoirs, intake rebuild, and what's listed on there. Based off of those, those numbers, those figures, those projections, where we're at as an overall health, the original proposal was for a five and a quarter rate increase annually, that we're probably year five on. Recommendation is to go with the full five and a quarter percent rate increase. There's the, the, what was included in the rate sheet. Real quick, on the left, water usage. Previously this year, we changed the unit of measurement from 100 cubic feet to just a single cubic foot. So you'll see the, the old fee was $3 and cents. Since we've basically changed that back, now it's three cents a cubic foot, three cents and many decimal points past that. That is a five and a quarter rate increase. Then you can see along the, on the right hand side, it's just, it's five and a quarter increase all across, all, all meter sizes. Additionally, equity buy-ins. We did a, same time as we did the, the, the rate study, the consulting firm that came back, evaluated utilities across the state of Idaho, as well as Washington State, found that Lewiston was not investing in their equity buy-in program. An equity buy-in program is assuming, let's say you own your house for 20 years, you've paid that same rate for multiple years, your rate has paid for all of the improvements that we're making today. But if somebody buys a house tomorrow, they have not paid for any of that. They get all the benefit of the improvements, the investment that the rate payers have paid up to that date. It's a way of making it more equitable for the current rate payers that are out there, for, you know, if there is ever a boom. You see this a lot, whether it's a, whether it's an equity buy-in, or a impact fee, that you'll see communities do something like this. So it offsets demand, helps growth and development pay for itself. For equity buy-ins, we were the lowest in the state. We were trying to get back up to at least middle of the pack. So we've been increasing these about 10% a year. So this is a single time charge for when you hook into water. So it is now, the proposed is to go up to 2902 for a single family, and then all the way down. I will say, the commercial size of meter, you look clear down on the bottom at a 10 inch meter, and that's $204,000 one-time fee. I don't know that we have any 10 inch meters in town. If you have a 10 inch meter, you're a massive industrial facility, and your draw onto the infrastructure would be significant, and $200,000 is, is not a lot of money when you consider how much water would be going through that 10 inch line. Moving on to wastewater, I promise things will get a little bit better than, from here. Wastewater, reading right off the top, the, the facility plan recommended a four and a half percent rate increase annually for up to 10 years, based off of grants that we've received, cost savings. We were able to not go the full four and a half percent in recent years, and this year, we're not proposing any rate increase. And a lot of that is, we've made a lot of, well, we've made all of the improvements out of the wastewater plant, but we have a flood load of capital improvements that are kind of queued up right now, waiting for grants from the Army Corps to get work done on the levee system, because some of our water, our sewer pipes still run within that levee system. We haven't gotten access, access on, under the railroad. So a lot of our work was dependent on getting permits that we haven't gotten yet. So we've got a queue of capital improvements that we haven't been able to get out the door, as well as some of these other things that we're waiting on design, waiting for approval from the DEQ. So we put, we're going to basically hit the pause button for this year, as we can get more of these capital improvements out. And so that's why we're basically recommending a 0% rate increase for wastewater across the board. Equity buy-ins, similar, same as water. That recommendation is still to make that, those increases as, based off of that currently adopted equity buy-in rate fee. It's a one-time charge for anybody hooking into the wastewater. It's less than the water, but the reasoning is all the same thing as the, the water equity buy-in. Sanitation, sanitation is by far our smallest utility, because the, the infrastructure that we run is just basically a transfer station. We, everything is, is farmed out to Sunshine Disposal. So we're at the mercy of, of fuel costs and revenue from recycling, or lack thereof. And again, revenues have been up, if I think it's a something, a time of COVID, ever since COVID hit. Sanitation revenues is just, as far as disposal fees have gone, the tonages, revenue has been up. So there, at this time, is, there is no real need to raise rates, despite fuel costs that have fluctuated considerably over the last, since COVID. So good news on that. We don't expect any dramatic increases over the projected future, pending, you know, that, that everything balances back out, pre-COVID, and fuel costs at least kind of go back to, to normal levels. Capital for sanitation is, as I think I've been in front of this body a couple times, talking about transfer station scales, those are under contract moving forward. Immediately after that is done, we will close that project out and move forward with the transfer station floor that needs to be replaced. We looked at a couple different options, as far as a cost benefit analysis for the transfer station floor. I've been here before and told you, unfortunately, public works struggles to follow a fiscal calendar year. Our hope would be that we could get this transfer station floor in the 24 budget, but just the way the nature of it goes, it may get rolled forward, like the transfer station scales, I think, got rolled over, forward into at least four or five fiscal years, just because it's, it's difficult to get, that was COVID, a lot of that. But transfer station floor, I'm expecting that we would undertake that project here in '24, but it may overlap into '25. Sanitation fees, it was a zero rate increase across the board, except for there was a few clerical modifications in basically removing a few service fees that didn't make sense. And basically yard waste, an extra cart, trying to make that more equitable for the cost of service, balancing that out. Previously, I think it was a dollar 17 plus tax for just an additional cart. You saw people kind of taking advantage of that. So we decided it would be more fair to just make it a cart as a cart as a cart. So that's the cost of service. And so that's basically cleaning that out. And the only other item was, we removed there, any service outside of the city limits. Well, we don't provide sanitation service to anybody outside the city limits, since we don't collect it. It would be Sunshine Disposal that that person would contract for. So there was no need for that line item, line item within our B structure. Last item, as I discussed, just public works fees. There was two additional fees that we created over the course of the last year. One was the parklet, just the application. If you remember, the creation of the parklet, so there's an application fee of a non-refundable $200 to review an applicant's parklet encroachment into the right of way. And then the other fee that was created, and I'm not quite sure, I was actually discussing this with the city engineer earlier today, an encroachment permit. There, there is reference within the city code for a encroachment permit fee, but there is no permit fee within our, our structure. So it, it takes staff time to review, it goes across all the agencies within our public works to review it, and then approve it. So there was a one, we're proposing a one-time $75 review fee for an encroachment permit. A recroachment permit would be, you would apply for an encroachment permit if you wanted to build a fence, say a retaining wall, some sort of artwork, a hedge, anything that's somewhat permanent within the right of way that you need to get permit for. Those are pretty broad across the city, you know, but it, it is at the cost of the owner knowing, acknowledging that if, if there's a gas line or a water line or anything underneath that, it's at the cost of the owner to move that, or it will be moved for them. You know, so you see a lot of retaining walls, a lot of fences. We review that to make sure it abides by, you know, sight vision triangles and utilities and everything else. So that's what an encroachment permit is. Everything else across the board, all those fees on the left-hand side are all, work within the right of way, curb gutter sidewalk, different terms in there, for stub-out laterals for wastewater, survey, staking, those things are all increased by basically the flat rate, two and a half percent. We do, through each, each year, we go back and look at these fees and make sure that our time is fairly assessed within that. It's hard, because like the plating fees on the right-hand side, you may get an easy plat, you may get a difficult plat, but you're trying to find what the true cost of service is. And so this year, we're proposing just a two and a half percent rate increase on that, to try and keep that within the ballpark of what is fair and equitable. All right, last slide. Just, I, I throw this in every year. I want to make sure everybody's aware, this is not gospel. This is me playing with the rate, trying to find out what a typical city Lewiston customer would pay, based off of FY '23, moving into FY '24. Obviously, there is, there is Lewiston, Lewiston Orchards Irrigation District, there's sewer districts, getting later into stormwater, there's new service areas. You may have a smaller cart, you may have a bigger cart, you may use more water. But I kind of tried to pick what an average person would consume. So 500 cubic feet of water, a 64 gallon cart service. Generally, you can see the fiscal year '23, which we are now leaving, $122.27, moving forward in FY '24, that's $135.44. That does include the stormwater service charge that is not, that is in the future, that we have not discussed yet. So that, you can take $10 off that if you want to see what this current proposal is. Save that for the next public hearing. Below is the utility assistance program. So you can see currently, we're at $95.84, moving forward into $105.91. And again, you can take that $7.94 off if you want to see what the next public hearing would be. I think, I hope I answered any questions you may have, but I am here for any additional questions.
Thank you, Director. We'll see if there's any testimony from the public first. Council questions for the Director. Counselor Lickie?
I just, thank you, Mayor. Director Johnson, I just want to clarify that the 5.25 proposed increase will cover the capital expenditures that you presented. So
Those that are listed on that, yes.
So we're not looking at using any reserves to cover those?
No, no. We, the conversation I have had with Director Amy is, is talking about trying to figure, we have additional debt service. We don't, we have not closed the loan out. So we don't know, until we close that loan out, we won't know what that, that payment will be. We know, I think it was listed as a $2 point, $2 million a year. There's a lot of debt that we need to pay off during the, the construction that we have saved up. Then we're going to have the first loan payment. Once we have all of that closed out, it will be much more predictable. So I will say, we don't intend to, to do that, to spend reserves to finish out those capital projects. But there, there, I will tell you, there will be some moving around within capital prioritization, once we know how that amortization plays out.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Director, have, on the water, water being kind of a mandatory thing, like sewer with some of our, you know, fixed income seniors. So have you looked at possibly on the non-commercial, having that a no rate increase, and then leaving the rest of it in there?
I have not. There, this, I'm going off of the old, I mean, the recommendation that when, when we both got here, that this was a single-tiered program. So you'll see a lot of municipalities charge, you know, for water conservation, that that first, say 100 cubic feet is set at a lower rate, and then as you move away through the system, it gets exponentially more expensive. And that, that is one way that municipalities have, you know, to, to kind of promote water conservation. City Lewiston has not had that system. We are in one tier for one expense. We have the utility assistance program for those who would qualify, but, but it, but at this point, no, we do not.
Okay, Counselors, I don't see any further comments, so I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Director. We'll turn the page, go to item B, Resolution 2023-37, considering restating, amending, and removing fees for water effective October 1, 2023. Counselor Schroeder?
We move to approve Resolution 2023-37.
Second. They're moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Townsley, to approve Resolution 2023-37. Is there discussion? Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, as I mentioned to the Director, I, I think even though these look like a dollar, $1.50, I think some of our seniors see an increase in any fees as being a big impact to themselves. I would like to see the rates, no rate increases for our non-commercial.
Further discussion, comments? Counselor Lickie?
Yeah, I've been trying to figure out, you know, the complexities of our water and wastewater projects. I appreciate that sanitation, I think we have, we're blessed with a great company that we contract work with, so to see zero increases there, that's great. I would like to see that we at least look at alternatives to, you know, what I agree with Counselor Spickelmeier, that people are feeling like we're hammering them with increased fees. And so if there's something that we can do, and knowing that we have some capital improvements included in that 5.25 percent increase, and that we have the ability to create some relief through the use of either reserves or a little more intuitive budgeting as far as how we move forward. I think I would like to look at that. Unfortunately, we have to make the decision this evening. And I can't do the math that quick, to see if we could even decrease it or compromise to come down. But I'd, I'd like to know if there's been any ideas or discussion on that by city staff to look at, you know, how can we bring some relief?
Okay, hearing, no more discussion. Clerk Brock?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Counselor Townsley?
Yeah, just, just a comment. I, I feel like we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. If we say we're going to put it on the shoulders of the, of the commerce community, then we get nailed with, how come we, we don't do anything to help promote business in the community? And if we spread it out, then we're hurting the seniors. So we are between a rock and a hard place. And I guess that's why they pay us the big bucks.
Clerk Brock?
Counsel President Lickie?
Nay.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Nay.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Nay.
I vote. Mayor, you do have the ability to break the tie vote if you would like.
Mayor votes aye. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel. Next up, we have Resolution 2023-38, Considering Restating, Amending Wastewater Fees Effective October Counselor Schroder?
I motion to approve Resolution 2023-38.
Second. Second. It's removed by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spickelmeier to Get a restating and amending wastewater fees effective October 2023. Is there discussion? Saying none, Clerk Brockie?
Counsel, sorry, Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion passed, just thank you, Counselors. Next up, Resolution 2023-39, Considering Restating, Amending, and Removing Fees for Solid Waste, Yard Waste, and Recycling Effective October 1, 2023. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-39.
It's removed by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Lickie to approve Resolution 2023-39. Is there discussion? Clerk Brockie?
Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleaver?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel. And next up, we have Item E, Resolution 2023-41, Considering Restating, Amending, and Establishing Fees for applications of public rights-of-way easements and flats, encroachment permits, right-of-way permits, subdivision filings, applications for wireless communication facilities located in public rights-of-way, appeals to written orders or decisions of the Public Works Department or Public Works Director, and parade and public assembly applications effective October 1, 2023. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-41. Second.
They're moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-41. Is there discussion? Clerk Brockie?
Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Next up, we'll have public hearing on stormwater drainage system service fees. We'll have, I'll open the presentation, we'll have a staff, I'll open the public hearing, we'll have a staff presentation testimony from the public if there is any counsel questions, then I'll close the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing on a proposal to establish stormwater drainage system user fees, other fees associated with stormwater drainage system services, and the fee to appeal written orders for decision by the stormwater coordinator effective January 1, 2023. Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here to talk about the stormwater drainage system utility fee. This is Resolution 2023-43. This one is a bit more short, a little bit more direct. The reason this one is up, this is a creation of a new fee. I didn't want to get it bogged down with the update of the other fees that we were discussing previously. If you remember, February 2, 2022, was the first time this council sat down and I introduced the concept of stormwater to this council. Essentially, the nexus of this tonight is a federal mandated stormwater permit that the city has been issued, and there are requirements that we have to meet that include reporting requirements, updating our infrastructure as far as the piping, the treatment, public education, outreach, post, having the design standards updated, inspection, et cetera, et cetera. It's quite a long laundry list of compliance issues. The benefit out of that is we get addition, we get our infrastructure, our underground, underappreciated stormwater infrastructure brought up to a more current standard. I can go on and on about why we are here, if you would like, I can. But generally, we've been discussing this for two years, almost two, well, over two years. This has started previously before my time here and pre-COVID, and goes back a ways. And we adopted Ordinance 4882, which was the creation of the Stormwater Division, which outlines the responsibilities of what the city of Lewiston is obligated to do. You'll continue to see more updated, whether it's standard operating procedures or updates to the municipal code that we will be required to administer. And so that is kind of a lot of what we have already discussed over the last two years to get to this point. What is difficult with this tonight is that the utility will not start collecting until January 2024, where our fiscal year starts in October. So first off, we're projecting revenue for nine months out of 12, so you're handcuffing yourself there, so you're projecting, you're basically taking three-quarters of what you expect in normal fiscal year. Additionally, tonight is adopting the rate, so I can't tell you what we'll spend the money on until you tell me how much money will be in the capital fund. This is no different than another utility that I already outlined, storm, or wastewater, water, sanitation. There is the tier of keeping the lights on, operations, there will be no debt service, so that is taken care of, and then there's capital. And so when we discussed this previously with capital, we have a laundry list of capital projects that up to this point have had no revenue source. And so that was coming out of property taxes, that was coming out of dedicated street funds, and so you saw a lot of deferred maintenance on the surface because something happened subsurface that we needed to address that was an emergency. These lists on the capital projects, those are the top projects that were identified in the previous stormwater master plan. And so if you adopt the full rate that you have discussed previously at $10.60 ERU, those are the projects we'll take on. If you find it better suited to take a reduced rate, we'll tick off that list and go until we balance that out. We will learn as we go. This is a creation, just like when we started a water or a sewer or any other enterprise fund, you take the revenue, you build off of that, you build your reserves, you build your capital, and you build your operations and move forward, and you report back to the council and the public. So this is what we're projecting based off of the rates that we have discussed previously, as that's why we're here tonight, is to discuss, is this what you want? Do you want it less? If you remember back to the chart I showed previously, that the blue chart that showed all the way across the options, this is the full capital, which means you would rotate through all of your capital projects in five years. If you do not fund at the full, you just pull that back. So you go eight years, you cycle through all your projects, or 10 years, you cycle through all your projects, or 40 years. Well, the life expectancy of some of these projects is 30 to 40 years, so if you're cycling through your project, there's no, you're never going to catch up. So to find that sweet spot of where you're catching up on your deficient infrastructure, yet at the same time finding that price point that is what you were comfortable with. So that's what we're here to discuss tonight. I don't have any more details besides what we've already discussed. What is in front of you tonight is Service Area 1 is $10.60. Service Area 2 is $7.75 in ERU. The, fortunately, it did not include a map with that, but that's the map that we've shown in the past, that basically if your drainage, we call it, if your drainage is in an urban setting, drains in a pipe, drains towards the clear water or Snake River, you're in Drainage Area 1. If your drainage is, you know, more out towards the orchards and it drains in a ditch, and then say it goes to Tammany or Lindsey Creek, you're in Drainage Area 2. Those are the two service areas. We'll continue to reach out to the public, let them know how we've got to this point, what we're facing with the federal mandates, and do our best to provide the best service we can. So with that, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, I should ask if there's any testimony from the public tonight. Welcome, Dave. Please introduce your city residents, and remember to speak up loudly and clearly into the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is David Dorensfeld. I live at 1010 Hemlock Avenue, and I'm here tonight to express my concern and disappointment on how the stormwater project enterprise fund is being implemented. I sat on both of the advisory committees for stormwater in the past. The last one that we sat on was finished in 2016, so it's been a while ago. But while I do support, I mean, we have to do something to upgrade our stormwater, I cannot support the, how the revenue is being derived and the amount of revenue that is being derived on a yearly basis. Going back to what the advisory committee recommended was 50% of the revenue coming from property taxes and 50% from fees. And the reason to do that was to provide some type of a governor on the city so the rates just didn't go up. We had, at that time, the advisory came up with a total budget of $700,000 per year. You know, we can see right now, it's going to be roughly about, what was that, 11 months or something? So we're going to be somewhere around $2.3 million a year, which, you know, it's a significant amount of money. And the recommendations, I've got a letter here that came from the advisory committee. Dick Wyatt was the person that authored the letter. I'll provide that here. Maybe you've seen it in the past, maybe you haven't, but it's got the recommendations of that 2016 advisory committee. I think one of the things you need to remember is that, you know, a fee by the city council is a tax when it comes to the county or to the school district, because, I mean, they're going to have significant fees imposed by what you're doing here, and the only way they've got to do it is increase their taxes to the residents. So, you know, if a fee's mandatory, you know, kind of is a tax. And so I would just ask you to take a hard look at this. I do think $10 coming right out of the chute is too much. I think the last time the city tried to do this, what, it started at $2 or $3 in ERU, and I think you were going to work your way up to $6 or something like that. So think about it. We need to do it, but maybe not to the degree that, just right out of the chute that we're talking right now. And with that, I'm complimenting Dustin and his team because I think they do a heck of a job. So while I do have some consternation with this, I think you've got a great public works department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Counselors, do you have questions? Counselor Townsley?
No, I know that we had seen, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know we had seen other possible rates that we could be looking at, and I think, had we chosen this to be the one that we were going to bring up today? Or did, I know there was, there were a couple of different options, and it's important to get this started. Everybody acknowledges that, I believe, but, yeah.
Yeah, there was a work session that we were, you know, staff has directed that we were to go with a $10.60 rate. So that's what we built into our budget. So those were the marching orders that we, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Lickie?
Director, do you have the slide that has those other options?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Follow up.
Counselor Lickie?
To Mr. Dorensfeld's comments about the last recommendation being 50% property taxes, 50% fees. When we talk about property taxes, that's up for competition essentially with everybody else, right? I mean, that's, we can't set forward that a certain amount will go from property taxes to stormwater. That happens every year, and I think the reason why we, the appeal of a separate utility and enterprise fund was so that we could make sure that we were not having continued deferred maintenance, and this would be completely dedicated to that fund. Although I do believe Mr. Dorensfeld brings up a good point that coming out of the chute, especially after seeing a 5.25% increase in another utility, I would like to see those other options, but can I, my question, I guess, for you is, is that correct? In my assumption, that if we went to that recommendation from 2016 to 50/50, the 50% coming from property taxes would be up for grabs by any other entity within, and history tells us that Public Works has lost out.
Yep, yep. There is a component that the city is charged for their right-of-way within the boundaries of it. So there is a component that does come out of property tax, and based off of the estimate for the full $10.60, the city would pay $480,000 a year in a stormwater assessment based off of the right-of-way. So that, and that came out of the recommendation of that study or the task force.
Counselor Cleaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, sat on that committee with Dick Wyatt and Dave the first time around, that was probably 2010 or 2011. And we came up with all sorts of ideas. My big concern is, okay, everything, everybody seemed to agree until it went to court. And I remember several counselors, including myself, said, this is going to court, don't spend the money. Of course, they went and spent the money, and then we ended up, long story short, giving the money back to the people through rebate on their, on their city bill. I don't want to see anything like that again. I don't know if we're sure this is going to make it. I'm not real happy about a $10.60 either we're sticking on everybody when we have no idea, you know, what the tax bills are going to be looking like come October 1. I mean, I guess I don't have the answer to that. You know, whether, and I fully support, I supported the ordinance that created this because we need it. But I remember saying that at that meeting, you know, that's if it gets funded. So when, you know, when we talk about what's coming out of the taxes, plus, you know, the fees that are coming off of here, well, anything that's coming out of the general fund, which is coming out of Director Johnson's budget, every dollar spent on stormwater, well, as of right now, is one less pothole that's getting fixed. That's kind of where we're at. So I don't know where the right level is. I understand Dustin's concern, if we keep kicking the can down the road, I mean, I could support, you know, five bucks to get this fee going, you know, with the adjustments behind that, but $10.60 seems a little bit much for me, so.
Counselor Schroder?
Thank you. Director Johnson, didn't, this, this rate would get us into completion by completion by five years, is that correct?
Yeah, the options provided were a five-year cycle, an eight-year cycle, a 10-year cycle, and then 20 to 30 years, 25, 30 years.
And every, and we are kind of behind the ball, but that's not the fault, because we were approved to have this MS4, right?
Yeah.
So we are, we're not at fault for being behind.
No, this, this was, I mean, you, you could have gone out your own and, and maintained the system. Now you don't have a choice. I mean, and it's no different from any other municipality. I mean, this is, we're, we're fortunate. We live in Idaho, where back east they have dual systems, so you have, you flush the toilet, it goes in the stormwater, it's cross-contaminated. We don't have that, so we're lucky. But this, this is, this is a problem all over the, all over the world. So yes, we, we're very fortunate. We live where we live, but we're also not fully ahead of the game.
Correct. And so in order to keep ourselves solvent with this mandate, we really need to do what we, and that's why we chose this at the time that we had it in front of us. And I, I don't remember all the different levels at eight years, how much are we paying? I didn't think it was very much different.
No, if you go to the eight years, $8.50.
So we're still there. We have got to step up and get this done and get caught up with where we need to be in five years. So I'm totally supportive of this, and we all agreed to do it this way at the time.
Counselor Spiegel, you're good?
Sure.
Counselor Forsman?
Excuse me if I'm trying to wrap my head. Are we, we're currently pulling some from, some funds from property tax to try to maintain wastewater right now.
The current, the current budget, which is, it fluctuates from year to year, but the last projection was $644,000, which is not adequate to maintain the system, comes out of property taxes.
What happens when we then put this fee in? Where does that money go?
That goes back into, well, you'll still pay a portion of that, because the city will be paying their right-of-way portion for it. But then you'll have, I mean, that's up to you. That is, that is policy discussion. And that now, the enterprise funds will be setting the, the user fees, but the property taxes and the general fund, those are for you to determine how those are spent.
Counselor Tousley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could, could you flip back to the, to the projects? Yeah, we, 21st Street Main Line Failure, that, that's, that's an ongoing problem that isn't getting any better, right?
Yeah, that's the one that we bring back to you every year at budget time to show you. You putting, you know, at 644,000 a year, we're putting away about 100,000, 150,000 a year to try and build that project up, because, and with inflation, it keeps getting away from us. But that is a, as I've discussed previously, 21st Street going up, all the properties are terraced. And so there's, it's been 30, 30 some odd years. So there's, there's corrugated metal pipe that's deteriorated to a point, and some of it's 40, 50, 60 feet down there. And so it's not a cheap fix to, to fix.
Yeah, and, and that, that also is on 21st. And, and everybody but Rip Van Winkle knows that 21st Street needs attention. And to get this on a five-year project, I mean, you'd like to think that possibly Brighton is, or not Brighton, that, that 21st is going to be part of a project that would be within five to eight years.
Yeah.
And so, but you got to do them both at the same time. So you need the funds to be able to do the Stormwater issues instead of pulling money away from what we're trying to do with streets.
Correct. That has been the struggle from, you know, you have, case in point would be wastewater right now is a very healthy enterprise fund. As a stat, we were able to go 0% on that, where water is in a condition that is strapped with all the demands on it. You do an improvement project, and so Stormwater, zero funds in the coffers, but we need to, we're, we're going to do 21st Street or any other, other street thing. And if there's no money for the, the capital improvements, they either get half done or, you know, hodgepodge put together, or they don't get done.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to follow on to Counselor Tousley's, was that last part, I didn't quite hear it. So if we did reduce it, what has been suggested by half, say it was a $5 fee for the higher-priced one. And that's a five-year, but you'd still have next year. If it wasn't working, you could readjust the fee.
Every year, we would, I mean, every August, we're here to discuss what we want to do with our fees, so.
If you did even start your fees this year, the likelihood of implementing any of these projects, I mean, are are they going to, are any of these on the plan, the budget?
I don't, the only one that could potentially go would be Hall Ford, and you still have 90,000. A lot of what we would be doing on the front end is the design work. And so, yeah, the first year, there's, there's probably not a lot of shovels in the ground, just because you've got to do the design, you've got to get out there, you've got to appraise, you know. We've already done the appraisal, but you got to go out there and fit the engineers, and, and yes, you're right.
Lower fee might help with repairs, and then you could see how much you were getting, how it's going. And then in the FY '25 budget, implement those, and you can tell how much money you needed and adjusted it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's, yeah, you're, you're, on the front end, there's only so much you can do as you're generating, getting your, your equipment, getting your designs, getting everything put in place. There's, there's a lot of stuff on the, behind the scenes as far as compliance with, with the, with the permit that, you know, that, that doesn't play into the capital, too.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Nope, sorry. No.
Counselor Forsman?
Did we already talk about the ERU, right, the one ERU, how that, the rate will be set for that? I'm mixing those up. This card.
But that's for Area One. Sorry.
I was just trying to pretend, because I'm trying to make sure I'm, and we're portraying that right, that it's $10 a household or, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's equivalent, equivalent residential unit, which is 4,500 square feet of impervious area. I forgot my number. Yes, 4,500 square feet of impervious area. So each household will be appraised one ERU. That is basically the basic, the, the standard. Commercial properties, larger, more impervious area. You basically take your impervious area roof, sidewalk, parking lot, divide that by 4,500 and get your ERU count. And that's what, what that would be, $10 times whatever your ERU is.
Counselor Schroeder?
Were you through? Thank you. Director, you were just talking about, if I can wrap my head back again, that initially we are doing all the setup with the old equipment and everything, correct? If we cut this back, will we be able to secure all of that within a year, or?
Going back, you know, as the initial processes to, to, as I said, keep the lights on. So we, we're going to continue to flush the system, maintain, you know, clean the system, maintain the system. We need to be in compliance with our, our, our permit. All of that needs to take place. The next tier will be the design work and then any capital projects. We don't, I don't know that we have anything on the shelf designed for Stormwater, because you can see all of those, Bengal Field, Hall Ford, Decant, all of that, you know, Nest First Grade, that, all of that is designed, that's listed in that capital. So you can see the dollar amounts that are estimated with some of those projects. And that's design. So when we, we work our way through the pyramid, the bottom pyramid will soak up whatever funds it's required, because we have to stay in compliance. Whatever is above that is, will go towards capital.
And we should be able to start some of those projects?
When you're creating a new utility, I, I don't, until we start the, I mean, we know generally how many accounts we have. That number isn't just pulled out of the thin air, but you, you, you just, as you start working your way through the system and, you know, just.
Basically, it still takes money to get.
It takes money, it takes time, and then you, you learn as you, you progress through it. Those are the projects based off of the recommendation that, that staff has received at $10.60. That seems like an achievable goal. If it's not $10.60, if it's closer to $5, I, we, we will probably half that list or, or more than half that list, because if we go to 10 to 5, now we're, most of that coming right off the top is administration and compliance with the permits and just general maintenance of the system. It's that top tier. So, yeah, you, you're just going, that difference of going from a five-year permit cycle loop to an eight-year permit cycle loop. That just means you're stretching that out just a little bit long, three years.
And all of those things are still needing to be upgraded, and their life expectancy is coming to an end.
Yeah, you're, you're basically funding the recommendation of the capital, of the, the facility plan. You're improving, you're funding that two-thirds of what you, what the recommendation is, which we, we all go at our own pace.
Counselor Lickie?
So when we talk about capital projects, we talk about one-time expenditures at that budget year, not an ongoing cost, even though we know that improvements will continue to have to come through in projects. So are there other funding mechanisms that we could have access to as a council to fund with prioritization of these projects to keep us out of further disaster while maybe starting with some relief as far as not such a full ERU rate that we, yes, we all, I think, agreed, because we wanted to make sure this was a solid plan moving forward, that it would fund itself. But hearing that we have some time to maybe build on that, I'm wondering if we don't have access to funds to make sure we're focusing on these capital projects.
Director, if you could limit your response. We're talking about fees. This is a public hearing on fees for Stormwater, so we don't want to get too far away.
Yeah, I mean, it, that would be a policy discussion that I don't control. There are no fee funds available beyond what you control and the creation of a utility. At this point, there aren't grants, there are not any allocations coming from Washington DC. So the, the, the discussion here, staff has brought you, is, is for your, for your decision of where you prioritize it, whether it's property taxes, a utility, or not funding it.
Counselor Forsman?
Can you repeat, sorry, one more time, how much we are pulling out of property taxes currently? I should have wrote it down first.
Roughly $644,000 a year.
Hey, Counselors, any more comments on fees, Stormwater? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Counselors. Item G, Resolution 2023-43, considering establishing fees for Stormwater Draining System Services effective January 1, 2024. This is an action item. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-43.
Second. Second. See a vote.
Then moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Tousley to approve Resolution 2023-43. Is there a discussion? Counselor Clever?
Question for our city attorney. Going back to the old days, what are the odds of us being able to pass this and not getting sued? How do you feel about how this is written? And are we on the right side of things?
Yeah, Counselor, I don't think that's an appropriate question. We have a motion on the table, and questions should address the motion.
May I, sir?
Counselor Clever?
I think it's real pertinent to the discussion.
There's a motion on the table, Counselor, to approve Resolution 2023-43.
Question.
Counselor Tousley?
Can it, can someone offer an amendment to possibly reduce this fee, or do we yea or nay it at this point?
Amendments are always in order.
I would make an amendment that we, for the first year, reduce the, is it Area One or let, Area One fee to $7.50 for the initial budget year. That would be in my amendment. And then this, the percentage reduced for this, the Area Two also.
Counselor, you're going to have to give me some more information than just a percentage.
Uh, what was the fee for the, what was the fee for Area Two? 7.75, so the first one was 10?
Counselor, it's 10.50 for service Area One, or 10.60 per ERU, and it's 7.74 per server, per ERU and service Area Two.
So that would reduce it about to 5.25, 5.50, somewhere in there?
Counselor, direct your questions to the.
To whom?
Counsel, your motion.
Yeah, my, I would reduce the Area Two fee at the same level of whatever the reduction is from the 10.60 to the 7.50.
It's your motion, Counselor. Do you want to figure it out, or?
I don't have my phone on.
Counselor, I get $5.47, 48 cents.
Okay, I was off.
Round numbers.
Two cents, five, okay, 5.47. Or division, the second area, Area Two. Area One would be 7.50. That's my amendment.
Another question for Counselor Tousley.
So we have a motion on the floor, no second, so we can't discuss it. Motion, vice for lack of a second. Kayla?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. My only question was whether or not that was also applicable to commercial properties.
I understand that. Kayla, thank you. I was waiting for the Counselor to finish his motion, if he had that for other properties and also for the utility assistance program. So there's quite a bit of information on there. Counselor Tousley?
I was looking primarily at the individual residents' fees.
Why do we do this? Why don't we recess for about two minutes? And then give you a chance maybe to look at your numbers, Counselor, if you would like to make a motion. Otherwise, we're doing that on the fly here. Otherwise, we're doing that on the fly here.
Paperwork.
All the listeners, city council back to order. Counselor Townsley?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reword my amendment, so I would like to reduce...
Let's have the second withdraw the, okay.
Have a second.
The original was...
Did we withdraw the original?
Oh, I see, okay.
Counselor Schroder, would you like to withdraw the original motion?
Um...
You made a motion to approve Resolution 2023-43.
Can't we have both of them going at the same time?
Well, we have a, Counselor Townsley would like to make a substitute motion, so we can rule on that one if he gets a second, counselor.
All right. Counselley, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make an amendment or a motion to adjust the residential fees for wastewater. Resolution 2023-43, for the regular service, the ERU would be seven forty. For assistance, it would be five, five dollars fifty-four cents. And then for area two, that would be five dollars seventy cents, and the assistance fee would be four dollars five cents. So area one would be seven forty, and area two would be five seventy.
Mr. Mayor?
I need a second.
I, can I make a friendly amendment? Because he stated wastewater instead of stormwater, so...
Counselor, did you, would you like to correct that you did say?
I'd like to correct that to say stormwater, if I, if I, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
I will second for discussion.
Thank you, counselor. We have a motion to, substitute motion to approve Resolution 2023-43. A service area one fee per ERU would be seven dollars and forty cents. Service area one fee per ERU for utility assistance program is five dollars and fifty-four cents. Service area two fee per ERU is five dollars and seventy cents. Service area two fee per ERU utility assistance program is four dollars and five cents. And for the commercial properties, also, service area one fee per ERU would be seven dollars and forty cents. Service area two fee per ERU would be five dollars and seventy cents. Counselor Lidkey?
The, the process to create this budget is more than a headache, the order that we have to do things. While I am in support of creating a fund that secures, that we can keep up with our enterprise capital needs, improvements, repairs, et cetera, I'm, I'm more likely to vote for this motion than the original, simply because we have yet to discuss other factors of the budget that would allow me to feel like we've approached this year's budget with people in mind that are struggling. So I will support the second motion and will be interested to see what that brings as far as available funds. And I would just remind the council that we have some avenues to create more savings to the people, and we need to try to figure that out. I don't like either one of them. I don't know.
Further discussion, councilors? Okay, I'll read the motion back. The substitute motion is to approve Resolution 2023-43 as amended. Service area one fee per ERU would be seven dollars and forty cents. Service area one fee per ERU under the utility assistance program would be five dollars and four cents, I believe, if my memory's five fifty-four. A service area two fee per ERU would be five dollars and seventy cents. Service area two fee per ERU under the utility assistance program would be four dollars and five cents. And then for commercial property, service area fee, service area one fee per ERU is seven dollars and forty cents, and service area two fee per ERU is five dollars and seventy cents. Okay, Clerk Raibon, or Clerk, all right, Carrie, I hope you heard that. Clerk Rocky.
Council President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
You're voting on the...
Substitute motion.
Okay. Aye.
Counselor Clever?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Next up, councilors, we have number H, public hearing fiscal year 2023 budget amendments accepting testimony on potential amendment of the fiscal year 2023 budget to receive unanticipated revenues received during the fiscal year and authorizing their expenditures. Director Gordon, welcome. Please introduce yourself to the record, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors.
Pardon me, this is a public hearing, I guess I better give the rules. Thank you. We'll have a staff presentation, accept testimony from the public, council questions if you have any, then we'll close the public hearing. So with that, I will open the public hearing, accepting testimony and the potential amendment of the fiscal year 2023 budget to receive unanticipated revenues received during the fiscal year and authorizing their expenditures. Director Gordon?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, Amy Gordon, city treasurer. And tonight, I am here to present the budget information for the council. The first public hearing is related specifically to amendments to the fiscal year 23 budget. Council received the ordinance for our amendments for the 23 budget. And as we had discussed in previous work sessions, it's a big list this year, but I do want to emphasize that this doesn't mean that we are spending new, yes, that we're not, it doesn't all equate to spending of dollars, which we will discuss, and it's not always unplanned spending. It might be more related to timing of spending. So why do we amend our budget? Sometimes we amend the budget for new revenues. Examples of new revenues that we have in 2023 was additional transportation funding from the state, grant revenues, and then contributions and donations. We will also amend the budget to address timing issues, the timing of projects, supply chain issues. These may be projects that you approved in a prior year that got delayed to this year, or it could be advanced progression on a project. We will also amend our budget for emergencies. This year, we had two emergencies that staff brought before council resolutions to allow us to spend, we had three million on the water reservoir and then 500,000 in emergency street repairs. And then we also have amendments that will allow us to make entries to fulfill governmental accounting standards. These are the type of entries that they don't equate to spending. An example of that would be the airport, we're a 50% owner in the airport. They operate independently of the city, but they are investing in improvements at that asset that we own. And we need to, each year, when we reconcile our assets at year-end, we have to record a contribution for the value of those improvements as well as a capital expenditure. So it's just an entry to our books, there's no money exchanged for those improvements from the city. Likewise, if we close out a fund, we have one fund that just dissolved, and then those, they have to release those assets, so there's an entry to do that. And then we have another fund that inherits those assets, and they have to do an entry to do that. But there's no money that left the city when those assets moved out of that fund, and there's no money that came into the city when the fund inherited those assets. I did a little summary down below that just kind of showed on a percentage-wise, since this is such a large list of amendments this year. The top three categories, we have our bond fund, so we've got $12.6 million worth of amendments that just allows us to fully spend those bond funds this year. Water has progressed well, wastewater finalized this year. That brings all those bond funds into the current year, we close out those projects. We have 5.3 million that's related to contributions and donations. That includes the airport, it includes the donation of the Canyon Crest Park. And then we have three and a half million related to emergency orders. So those, just those three categories right there are 85% of your amendment list. So I will stand for any questions.
So let's see if there's any testimony from the public. Councilors, questions? I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Director. Next up, councilors, we have ordinance 4892, first reading, considering amending ordinance 4858, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, appropriating additional monies that are received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho, in the sum of $25,571,810. Action item. Director Gordon, do you have anything else to add?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Lidkey?
I'd move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4892.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Lidkey, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4892. Is there discussion? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I'd mentioned before, I'm kind of a stickler, I think we should stick with the budget. I believe in the emergency items we had, we had some grants and stuff, but to me, there were some line items in there that were from reserves and repairs out at the golf course that were not emergencies. I think they could have waited, so I won't support the ordinance.
Further discussions, amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance number 4892. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending ordinance number 4858, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho, in the sum of $25,521,810, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, next up, we have item J, public carrying fiscal year 2024 budget, accepting testimony on the proposed budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. Again, I will open the public hearing, we'll have a staff presentation, testimony from the public, council questions, and then we'll close the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing, accepting testimony on the proposed budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. Director Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor, city council, Amy Gordon, city treasurer. Okay, so we're gonna backtrack a little bit. In addition to approving amendments to the fiscal year 2023 amendment, over the next three weeks, council will be reviewing ordinance for the fiscal year 2024 appropriations budget, the property tax certification for fiscal year 2024. And then on the third evening, August 28, we will have a public hearing in regards to forgone taxes, and then a resolution for council to take action on following that public hearing. But tonight, we will talk about our fiscal year 2024, which would include our appropriations ordinance, and then the tax certification that supports that ordinance. So, 2024 budget appropriations. We will start with the question that everybody wants to know, is how will this budget impact their taxes? So what I can tell you is the 2024 budget that has been presented to council for consideration does not include a property tax increase. It does capture the value of new construction as well as annexations, similar to what was done with the fiscal year 2023 budget. But the 3% increase to our tax base that municipalities are allowed to take each year, there is a 0% increase to that tax base. Down below, I have demonstrated where those funds are programmed, those property taxes are programmed to go. There is, we've discussed earlier tonight about the property taxes that supported stormwater. A portion of that, 244,000, was programmed into capital transportation, and the rest was into transportation's operating budget that supported the maintenance and operation of stormwater. So that's why we see the reduction in the capital fund as well as the transportation fund. The portion of property taxes that were actually dedicated towards transportation operations, those are still in there. But last year, one of the things we did is we reduced the general fund property taxes to increase the property taxes in the transportation operations fund to support some one-time expenditures they had. They purchased a Skidster and a couple other items that they had in their 2023 budget. So we've reallocated those dollars back to the general fund. And then we have dedicated some more funds to the public transit, the public transportation fund. the public transportation fund to provide their match for some of their capital projects. And then I'll just make a note, even though we're, the amount of the 3% increase that we could have included in this budget but did not is $708,204. One of the other areas that we look for to help us fund our budget is our unassigned reserve balance. And we look at what we have in excess reserves and how we could utilize those to fund the current budget rather than going to property taxes. So this is a listing of the reserves that are programmed into the 2024 budget. The utility assistance program, we discussed that earlier tonight, that is to subplant the fees that are reduced in the enterprise funds. We have money in there for legal fees for some of our current litigation. We programmed another 200, we programmed $250,000 again in fiscal year 2024 for deferred maintenance. We have our contracted services with some of our community partners. We have $500,000 programmed for the airport. We have money programmed for the generator at the Lewiston Police Department. This was an expense that was in the 2023 budget. The project did not get completed, so it's just coming back into the 2024 budget. We have some capital projects related to the golf course. And then we have, we have a tax rebate that will have to be done to Lumen. It's a utility company. It's a, State of Idaho sets the market values. They do the appraisals for utility companies. And they, Lumen disputed those appraised values. They were successful. And so there's a, every taxing entity within the State of Idaho has to rebate some of the taxes they've collected in prior years towards that reassessment. And so that would be, that's a high estimate of what the city's portion would be. And then on the right side, I have, we have some reserves that we have in the budget, and those are restricted reserves. Those are coming from pots of money that can only be utilized for those specific purposes. 583 funds was a private donation to the Lewiston Police Department, and they had specific requirements on how they wanted the police department to utilize those funds. These are the funds that are remaining from that donation, and so they've been programmed into 2024, so the police department can use those funds. And then the opioid, that is from the recent settlements that the City of Lewiston are receiving settlement funds. And this is what we have in that account today. So we're programming it so that we can decide how to spend those funds in 2024. If they don't get spent, they stay in the reserves, and they'll just carry forward into the future years. When we wrote our 2023 budget, so our current year budget, we wrote it with the assumption we would spend down 23 days of cash on hand. I, when I prepared the slideshow, I thought we would probably only use six days of those reserves, but I think possibly maybe about 10 days of those reserves. So at the end of 2023, I am projecting we'll have a little over 160 day, or I'm sorry, we'll have about 154 days cash on hand. That's just an estimate based off projections. And then if we were to carry all these items into the adopted 24 budget, I would project that we would be utilizing 22 days to support the 24 budget. This budget does include the funds that are in the council's building reserve fund. We sometimes refer to it as assigned building reserve. We have currently today in that fund about 6.4 million. We have programmed to fund it again in 2024, the 1.6 million, which would then make available to council a little bit over 8 billion. That is in the budget, and the description that it is in the budget with is exactly what is shown here on the screen, which is what's in city code in regards to that. Building reserve, which says constructing or remodeling city-owned buildings and properties and onsite and offsite infrastructure needs for such building and properties. So what this does is it leaves it to council's discretion on how those funds are spent in 2024, should council choose to spend them. So the next few slides lists out all the budget requests that were made and the funding status of those, if they are included in the 2024 budget and if they are excluded. We were able to fund almost all department requests this year. There is a few exceptions, which are in the lighter yellow. Those are related to operational requests. We have several requests made by the police department for improvements at their shooting range, to do an operations audit, to add a crime analytics module to the Motorola software, which was formerly known as Spillman. And then we have a significant increase on our iLet software, which we, is a software that we utilize through the State of Idaho. Fire, their requests that they put in this year were some additional funds to allow them to do an all-hands training, to replace their firefighting foam, confined space rescue equipment, public safety equipment reserve that will help them build up funds for where, when they have large replacements to do, like their SCBA that costs several hundred thousand dollars to replace at a given time. The increase to their medical program director's contract, the increase to their radio repeater leases. Then we have in my budget, the finance budget, a request to purchase a procurement softer that will help us manage contracts and streamline our procurements processes. We have the increase to our audit fees as well as our postage increases. And then water, I'm not going to go read through the water because Dustin covered those in his capital projects. And then the same with, in the sanitation fund, we have an increase in the contract. Those will be absorbed by their current budget because sanitation's not asking for a rate increase. Transportation fund, they have some one-time funding requests and some ongoing funding requests. We were able to fund all of those with the exception of a small operational request. These will go, these requests will go towards training fees. The attachment to the skidster they bought this year to replace some LED streetlights, their peak control signals, and then an increase in their fuel as well as their development and scoping services. Library, the main item to note for library is they are working on replacing their public internet, internet system, and so that request has been funded. Public Transit has a request to replace their scheduling software. This is software that I believe is getting outdated and no longer being supported. So there's, this is a one-time fee. It'll replace the software. The great thing about it is going forward, the maintenance fees will be cheaper than they currently are. So what I would like to offer in closing comments is just reiterate that this budget that is being proposed is a no increase in the property taxes that the City of Lewiston receives. This would be our second year consecutively of no property tax increases. It does include the introduction of GMT revenues from the State of Idaho. That stands for ground emergency medical transport. That is an EMS revenue. We have what is an estimate in the budget. Those fees will take effect in January, so there'll be nine months of that revenue. We won't actually collect it until after the end of the fiscal year, but we will need to accrue those revenues into 2024 and record a corresponding receivable for those. We have budgeted increases in our investment revenue to correspond with the interest rate market that we are benefiting from currently. I did do this conservatively because my concern would be that the interest rate market would come down next year. So that has been, I've taken a conservative approach on that, but we have increased revenues for investment earnings. This budget includes over 10 million of grant funds that are being expended. We have the 7 million that the water fund has received directly from the State of Idaho of their ARPA funds. And then we have 3 million still of the city's ARPA funds that we received directly from the federal government. This gives council the flexibility to focus on facility improvements because we've left that assigned building fund, the building reserve, in a kind of to-be-determined status. So when we start having more in-depth conversations about deferred maintenance and where we want to focus on and what facilities council may want to tackle or address, you will have the ability to do so with the assigned building reserve. The, the approach I took to writing this budget is it would be really easy for me to take all those one-time funding requests that were shown on some of the previous slides and just pay for them out of reserves. But I balance that out between also using, or also using revenues. The reason for that is that will help minimize the need for potentially a tax increase next year. So maybe we could go three years consecutively without a property tax increase. We did not add any new personnel positions to this budget. I did build into this budget the compensation review committee's recommendations in regards to council and the mayor's budget, so they are in there. And that is all I have for this evening. I'll just, I just have up here the four different actions that council has to take in regards to budget. So we will, council will get to read the ordinances tonight, next Monday night, and then the third and final reading will be on the 28th of August.
Thank you, Director. Any testimony from the public tonight? Okay, hearing, non-counselors, questions of the Director? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director, it's kind of new to me, and I tried to look back into that unassigned, the reserves. Is it normal to use that much reserves, $1.8 million, to support a budget?
It's consistent to what we did last year. We didn't quite have that much last year, but maybe just a few hundred thousand less. In prior years, no, but we have accumulated several days' cash on hand. The standard for cash on hands would be 90 days. We're sitting in the 150 days. So I think it would be responsible to spend down the reserves before looking at other revenue sources such as property taxes. We have the, we have the savings account that would allow us to use user savings versus property taxes.
Pastor Lickie?
Thank you. Director Gordon, again, I think, done a great job really trying to find that balance and allowing us some freedom to stretch our legs and conservative approach to a budget. So my question is, with that building fund, what's in there is appropriated for that? Could we take what is currently proposed as an additional 1.65 million that we presume would be ongoing as we move forward? It's been used for several years now. It was about 2 million, now it's 1.65. Is that something that this council could take a look at using as a debt service amount to bond improvements to do something like 21st Street or Main Street improvements? Is that within our wheelhouse to look at?
So that 1.6 million, the source of that 1.6 million is property taxes. So you could dedicate those to funding a bond. If it was to fund a bond specific to a street reconstruction, my recommendation would be that would, we would fund that bond from our capital projects fund. So it would just be a reallocation in a subsequent year where we would reduce general fund property taxes, an increase of property taxes in the capital projects fund. So the, that 1.6 would no longer run through the assigned building fund. It would just be levied for, specifically for streets, if that was what the bond was for. And then it would remain there to service that debt.
Follow-up?
Counselor?
And then just clarification, I know we're not speaking to our forgone. We could also take that completely out of our budget for this year. Would that result in that amount not being available in future years based on our current?
Is your question if you were to remove the 1.6 million? If you were to reduce property taxes by 1.6 million, it would not be part of your property tax base anymore. Your 3% increase that you are allowed to take in a subsequent year is based on your highest property tax base over the last three years, but you would be limited to the 3%, whichever is your highest property tax base, which would be the most current. So you, if you were to reduce it by 1.6 million this year, the most you could add back in the following year would be the $708,000. And then any other new, if you had new construction or annexations.
Last part? So that, from what I'm hearing, so that we can attack some of our deferred maintenance, especially in our infrastructure, but also look at relief, looking at not taking the forgone would be our easiest route to that. Would you agree? And putting it in the coffers?
That will be a decision council can make at the final reading. They can reserve the $708,000, so it could be taken at a later date. Or you could choose not to reserve it so that it would no longer be available to ever be added to your tax base. Mayor.
Counselor Porstman?
She asked quite a bit of the questions I had written down, so, but I did have some others. So the Seekins charge, was that part of that, that donation for the police officer fund, the police fund?
I believe that was in regards to 23 amendments.
Okay, we went over that a while ago. Okay. Thank you. And then, follow-up?
Counselor?
And then the opioid, opioid fund, is that not restricted on how we can use it, like towards, I don't know, tackling the drug issue that we have within our cities or something around that realm?
So that, that is why it's a restricted reserve. There are only certain purposes those funds can be used for. And so I did program the full amount of those funds into 2024, but when it comes time to decide if we want to spend those funds, it will have to be in accordance to the judgment.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear that part. I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Fastest questions, Counselor. That's what we're here for.
Well, there.
Counselor Porstman?
What would then, I know Counselor Lickie was talking about the 1.65. What would that look like if we, in percentage-wise? Because they never talked about the 3% that we could only pull for. I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the fly with math here, but.
You're going to make me do math? I think that would be about 7%. Because if we, 3%, 708,000, 6% would be 1.4 million. So I would guess that would be about a 6%, a 6% reduction.
What if then we did just 3%? That would, would that take out of that, or would that just a general 3% off the property taxes for the following year?
Is your question, what would happen if we reduced property taxes 3%?
Yeah, if that would just come out of that 1.6, or if it would just.
That would be for council's discretion.
How we want, how we want to do that.
Council could decide where they would want to reduce the budget.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Lickie?
When we talk about the general fund in general, there was a document, I believe, and I'm not seeing it in accordance to this hearing, but there was a breakdown of where that went. And I know the majority of that goes to fire and police and then it on down. Because that, you know, that $16 million looks like a lot. But I feel like we need to discuss where exactly that is going from the general fund and the percentages of use.
So when we build the general fund budget, we take a look at all revenues of the general fund and then the various expenses that the general fund needs to report. So we don't necessarily attach property dollar to specific expense line items. But let me see if I can find a reference sheet here. In regards to fire and police, you have the total police expenditure budget for the 2024 proposed budget for police is 9.8 million. For fire is 9.8 million. The difference between the two is fires budget includes all the expenses related to their EMS services. And fire does receive EMS revenues. Off the top of my head, I could not tell you exactly how much they get in EMS revenues, but it would be probably between 3.5 and 4 million of EMS revenues. So they're not fully subsidized by property taxes. The police department also is not fully subsidized, but their revenue is fairly minimal. They do receive revenue from the school district that supports the three SRO officers. And they do receive.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Counselor?
Director Gordon, currently we have somewhere north of 300 city employees, I believe. And if I'm correcting my math, about 75% of them are under a collective bargaining agreement. Is that remotely accurate?
I think that's probably in the ballpark.
So when we talk about wages as a part of this budget, do we know a total amount of this budget that's spent on employee wages? I tried to go through all the requests and add them up.
So there was a budget guide that was released today. I think council received it on Friday. And there is, within that schedule, it is titled, "Summary of Where Money Goes." And on that schedule, it breaks out wages and benefits. So you can see how much of our budget goes towards wages and benefits. It will break it out by the fund. And then we take the general fund and we break it out down below because there's, unlike the other funds, there's multiple departments within the general fund.
Thank you. I I have that in front of me. I just didn't want to be the one to read it out loud.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I will tell you, I have it with me and I could read it. But I kind of just realized that mine was a poorly printed copy, so it kind of cut off the department names. And I believe I could, yeah, but we do, I list it there. It's on the city's website, though, that any citizen that's listening tonight or here presently could go and review that.
Counselor Lickie?
Just want to follow up on that statement. So when we look at it and right now, just where the money goes, that particular, it's for wages and benefits, it's about 33.8 million dollars. And if you take 75% of that, that's still a very large number. We really were held to by contracts to not adjust those wages. And so I just want to be very clear that when we look at, when I've looked at this budget and looked at, you know, where can we make adjustments? And where are we with deferred maintenance? You know, we really are, I have to say that a 0% tax increase budget is impressive two years in a row. Is there some avenues that we can create some relief? I believe so, and I mentioned one of them earlier. But I do want to say that, I think that I do have some concerns on how we fund our employee wages and benefits in the sense of how we look to keep up with cost of living allowances that have happened historically almost every year that I could find. And then automatic step increases that are happening in every year. And so those increases are really putting a strain on our ability to look at, you know, if people are our product, when we talk about enterprise funds and police and fire, we have to look at making sure we have an adequate staff. But I do look at it as if you choose to work within the civic field or in government, that we may have to look at pulling back COLAs. And I know that inflation doesn't quite match what we've given. But automatic, not automatic necessarily by the personnel manual, but what seems to be pretty regular, we need to look at what that looks like sustaining moving forward. And so I would, I just want to make that comment because it is a large amount and it's a huge portion of our budget. And so we need to look at how long we can sustain. Do we go into collective bargaining with the notion that we have to look at what we can bite off and chew and swallow and not get stuck in a situation where we have another 10-plus million in deferred maintenance because we've had to make decisions for these budgets? But at this point, I just, again, even though I have some ideas of how we can make this budget even more conservative in the way of how we move forward, I think you guys have done a great job. I just want to make sure that I say that. But I think we need to look at, we say it all the time, but long-term planning. And those increases are hitting us hard. And we are not growing in a population-wise. Our tax base is not growing. And currently, it's not spreading because we're not having new business. So I just would encourage this council to really take a look at that as we make these decisions with the things that we have that latitude to do.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. So Director, adding up all the golf course stuff, it looks like for the total budget, they're asking for $588,000 for the golf course. Looks like $260,000 from reserves and the rest is going to come out of property taxes. Is that correct?
So we have, yes, we have, we're utilizing reserve for several of the capital projects that the, I'm sorry, the golf course manager, our golf course management company requested in their budget that they presented to council. The reserves are funding those requests. We have also, within the general fund, a golf fund activity that funds the contract we have with the golf management company. It funds the water that the golf course uses. And then it funds some, there's a little bit of extra funding in there for some contracted services. And then within the facilities budget, we have $90,000 for any improvements that might come out up outside of what the golf management company requested. I don't know the math on that, but I think that you did that. The only exception would be is we also have some revenue programmed in there that would be received from the golf course. If I remember correctly, what they presented to us and what we built into the budget was a net income of $66,000, which would actually then be the income to the city.
Counselor Forssman?
Just so I, one more time, understand, we can, though, say we, as a council, if we wanted to say that we want to pull 3% from this line item, that can no longer fund into that. Is that correct?
Are you speaking about the assigned building reserve fund again? Yes, if you, you could make an amendment to the appropriations ordinance as well as a tax certification ordinance. And to the tax certification ordinance, you could reduce the amount of property taxes that were on, that are being listed there as tax levy. And then you could likewise go to the appropriations ordinance and reduce the specific line item you wanted to reduce. And the building fund reserve is a specific line item in that.
Okay, thank you.
Appropriations ordinance.
Thank you.
Counselors, I'll let you sit here for about another minute before I close the public hearing. If you have any other questions or comments. Get two more shots at this over the next two weeks. I think earlier in the process, it's always better, gives us more time to. Hey, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, next up, we have Item K, Ordinance 4894, first reading to be termed the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewis and for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024. This is an action item.
Mayor?
Counselor Lickie?
I would move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4894.
Second?
Removed by Counselor Lickie, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4894. Are there any amendments or discussion?
Is there discussion?
Counselor?
On this, and it was mentioned before by President Lickie, but that 1.65 million, the general fund, I have a real problem with it. To me, it's not very transparent. It was in last year's budget and we did nothing with it. And then what it said up there was we would spend it on buildings, doing repairing things. We didn't spend anything. It looks to me more like a slush fund. So I would, I either want it to be renamed and assigned a project or removed. That would be what I'd support.
Counselor Lickie?
For an amendment?
You made the original motion, Counselor.
I know.
You can withdraw your motion.
I would withdraw my motion.
Counselor Schroder, the motion's been withdrawn?
I'll make a new motion.
Counselor Lickie?
I would move that we, I would move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4894 with the following change, and that is to move the line item named General Fund Building Reserve Fund under allocations totaling a proposed $1.65 million and move that into the Transportation Fund. Excuse me. The Transportation Capital Fund, I believe.
I'll second it. What's the question?
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I'm going to phone a friend because I know that our finance director wants to make sure that we are hearing the motion correctly and that the money is taken from one fund and put into the other in the appropriate spot because we have a couple of transportation funds. Director Gordon?
Thank you.
Yes, so if you, if you were to reduce it from the general fund and then if the intent was it would fund capital transportation projects, then it would then need to be levied as streets. And then we would also, I would recommend council consider, because you're, the amendment that's before them right now is the 2024 property tax or the 2024 appropriations. So this amendment, you would be reducing that building reserve fund and the general fund and then increasing the capital projects expenses.
Could you say that one more time, Director, and slowly and loudly? It's hard to hear. I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry about that. So currently, we're reading the appropriations ordinance. So we would just be reducing the general fund, the line item that's the assigned building reserve by the 1.6 million. And then you would also need to consider increasing the capital projects expenditure.
For transportation?
Capital projects, I apologize because I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I think that it's just simply listed under governmental capital as general government or capital projects. So it is on the third page of the ordinance, under Item C, Capital Funds, the very first fund listed, Capital Projects Fund, that currently has 2.693 million appropriated. That would be where you would increase. To include the 1.6 million, you'd be reducing the general fund.
If I can, Counselor Lickie, go ahead.
Can I restate my motion or clarify or withdraw? What would you like me to do?
I can read it to you if you'd like, and you can tell me if I have it correctly.
Sure.
I think the motion, as I understand it, is to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4894 and amend it. And you would like to reduce the building reserve fund by 1 point, the building reserve fund in the general fund by 1.6 million. And you'd like to increase the capital projects fund and the capital funds by 1.6 million. Director Gordon, does that sound about right?
Correct.
Isn't this fun?
Does that require a second?
That requires a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, Counselors, if you have your packets with you or if you have them online, it's on Pages 47 and 48 of your packet. And the motion is to approve first reading of Ordinance 4894, which is on Page 46 of your packet. And it is to remove from the building reserve fund under the general fund on Page 47, 1.6 million from the $8,500,000 figure and move it onto Page 48 under Capital Funds C, the Capital Projects Fund, and to add that $1.6 million to the 2.693030 on Page 48. That is the motion. Is there discussion? Counselor Lickie?
Just to explain my motion, I, while I don't know that it's a non-transparent flush fund, I do agree that we need to prioritize the spending. And even though we do have deferred maintenance, that I believe that. that I believe the 6 million that we will leave in there can be directed over the next fiscal year or two, based on speed of projects. This allows us to really say that we want to have a long-term investment in our, in our streets. Moving it to that fund allows us to look at either a bond to completely fix and not just Band-Aid a high priority project, which we know that we moved Main Street and 21st Street to Positions 1 and 2. And this allows us to say that we're committed to that. Whereas keeping it in a building fund says we can approach deferred maintenance, but I think that that leaves a good, healthy amount to address needs that need to be done for safety, to bring things up to code, and allow us to finally say to Dustin Johnson, "Go fix a road completely." And that is why I made that motion.
Counselors, further discussion?
Can you make another amendment? Or how many amendments can we have?
Counselor Forstman, would you like to amend the substitute motion?
I'm trying to think of how to word it. So we're moving 1.650 from general revenue to capital revenue, or transportation revenue, currently outstands.
Excuse me, from the general government funds over to the capital funds.
To the capital funds. I, then I would make an amendment that we move all but 3% out of the 1.65 to the capital fund and remove 3% from the tax base. Does that make sense? Well, now, I agree with putting money into, moving that 1.65, but I want to reduce the 1.65 by 3% and not collect that 3% anymore, giving the, giving a property tax relief of 3% and then put the remaining in the capital. Does that not make any sense?
So your, your motion is to reduce the levy, the profit tax budget, by 3%?
That, as she said, we could reduce by 3% out of, unless I misunderstood it, out of that 1.65.
So can you give me a, a point to somewhere on the ordinance or the budget, so I know exactly what you're referencing? Please.
I wrote it down. Where did she put that 1.65? That's where, that's where I'm looking at.
Mayor Johnson, if I may, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer. I believe what Counselor Forstman would like to do is reduce the property preservation, or I'm sorry, the Building Reserve Fund by 708,000, which is 3%. And then take the difference of the 1,650,000 minus the 708,000 and move that difference to the capital fund.
Correct, because we will no longer be pulling that 700.
So what that would do is the Building Reserve Fund on the Appropriations Ordinance that we're still discussing, we would reduce the Building Reserve Fund by 1,650,000. And then we would increase the Capital Projects Fund by 942,000. It would reduce the overall Appropriations Ordinance by 708,000.
942,000, Director?
That would, 942,000 would be the increase to the Capital Projects Fund. So we would reduce the Building Reserve Fund by the 1,650,000, increase the Capital Projects Fund by 942,000. And then we would reduce the subtotal, the 107,392,940,000 would be reduced by 708,000.
Yep, I understand you correctly.
You did, thank you.
Second still stands if you need that. My second?
I think it just dies if no one seconds it. So I think we're just waiting to see if anybody's willing to.
Second.
Fine.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Forstman to do a lot of things.
Yeah, I agree. But it sounds all good.
City Attorney Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to maybe offer a suggestion, because Council President Littkey's motion with the amendment was also to approve the first reading, so that was all captured together. So it's a little odd, then procedurally, to also have a separate amendment. So I wonder if there should be a vote on Counselor Littkey's motion to approve with her amendment? And then perhaps if Counselor Forstman wanted to bring another amendment back during the second reading? Typically, they're all separated. So I'm just procedurally trying to kind of work through it, too.
It's harder following, no. We have an amended substitute motion on the table. I mean, we could do it. You would have a second opportunity next Monday to do that if you'd like, or we can try to muscle through it here.
Well, if I got a second, it seems like we have some opportunities for discussion. Is that correct?
That is correct. But you know what? I'm going to ask Director Gordon if you could, you have a microphone there? If you could just explain that to all of us? And if you have a copy of the ordinance to the council packet, if you would refer to pages in your explanation, so everyone can follow along, so they, all of us know what we're voting on?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. So I believe what Counselor Forstman is recommending is on Page 2 of 4 of the ordinance, under Item A, General Government Funds. Beneath General Fund, it's almost all the way to the bottom, the third lineup, Building Reserve Fund. He would like to reduce that figure of 8,050,000 by 1,650,000.
1,650?
Reduce the 8,050,000 by 1,650,000. That would change that line item to 6,400,000. And then on Page 3 of 4, underneath Item C, Capital Fund, the very first fund listed there, Capital Projects Fund, she would like to increase the 2,693,030 by 942,000, which would change that amount to 3,635,030. That amendment would also change the subtotal on Page 2 of 4 for the total general fund. It would reduce that 40,264,600 Then on Page 3 of 4, the subtotal of Item C of 32,21540 would be reduced by the 942,000, or I'm sorry, it would be increased by the 942,000. And that would change that subtotal to 32,963,540. The subtotal that is listed immediately below Item D of 107,392,940 would change to 1,006,450,940. And the grand total of 101,572,750 would change to I don't think I did that right. I need to go backwards and correct the subtotal. Because we are actually only reducing the overall budget by 708,000. So I apologize for that. So the subtotals I listed for total capital funds and the subtotal under Item D and the grand total, I need to correct. The subtotal for total capital funds would be... Well, that, that was correct, because that increased by 942,000.
Capital, yes.
Yes. It's the subtotal under Item D that would be reduced by 708,000. And that would change that to 106,684,940. And the grand total would change to 100,864,750.
Thank you, Director. This motion better pass. Okay. Is there discussion, Counselors, on the amended substitute motion?
Yeah. By removing 708,000 approximately from our tax base in coming years, if we needed to, I just want to make sure we understand that we can't just go after the forgone taxes coffers. We actually have to then raise taxes by 3% to access those funds. So with my original motion, it does not raise taxes, but it allows us to spend those monies in a way that is an investment and a service to our citizens. So I'm, I'm struggling with this motion, just in the sense that, again, I look at staff wages than different things that are coming down the pipe, that we come back and we immediately have to go after an increase. So I, I need to understand the overall long-term savings of removing that, even though, I mean, I think it sounds great and looks great on paper in a way. I mean, these numbers should blow anybody's mind, but you know, when we reduce a budget, it is, I, I think we have to be very specific on why we're doing it and what those long-term effects are as far as, you know, taking it from something that we can actually go after improvements to our infrastructure. I, I'm all about decreasing the tax base by that much, but do we have to take away from infrastructure? That, that, I think that's my overall concern when we have just been hammered by disaster. And I, I'm, I'm nervous, I guess, is my comment.
Counselor Forstman?
I guess whether I'm looking at this is that we have 1.6 million that was going to be put into yet another fund that is, I think, around 6 million, if I have it correct, or above that. So that's already been putting away into a Building Reserve Fund, which is quite a bit in any that we can still put towards our infrastructure and getting us up to par on that. And then still moving money into the capital to work on our roads and putting, as well as giving our citizens some kind of relief, which they all said they want and need. I know it's hard, because we're talking about taking funds away and, but we've been, I feel like our city is well good with their money, and we put reserves away, and we're being diligent. And we also have that forgone taxes that have been continually saved over and over, and that has quite a bit in there. So I feel with this having, even if we did have to come back the following year with now them, this, property taxes are going to be raised yet again this year from just housing going up. So this maybe could give them a little bit of a break so that they can actually not feel like some are having to move out of their home, or are not be able to pay their bills as well with everything else that continues to rise. So this seemed like an area that we might be able to, and maybe that needs to be a little less than the amount that I proposed, but I feel like this got the discussion on the table of ways that we can somewhat give some relief to the taxpayers so that they can still take pride in their city as well as pay their bills, and not us just holding money because we're, we're too afraid.
Counselor Littkey?
What's the question? Or Director Gordon? Say we did this, and we pulled back from our base, and then next year we come and we're like, we've got to raise our taxes. And based on the allowances, looks like we go, we're going to do a full 3%, gets us our 708,000 back, give or take. Then we can go after our forgone and actually access money based on the 1% allowance that we can, or was it 3? I don't remember the allowance. It's not very much of our budget. So, and I believe with, at the addition of last year's forgone, we have about 10 years of available funds with those increases based on our 23 million tax levy, correct?
I don't have with me tonight the amount that we currently have banked with the state at, in forgone, but you're correct, it's the high 2, if not 3 million amount. There are restrictions on what you can levy in forgone. For operational needs, it's 1%. And then that 1% would then stay in your tax base. If it's for capital needs, you're restricted to 3%. Once you've spent those dollars, they drop out of your tax base. So it's a one-time increase in your tax base. The, so the max increase related to forgone a city can take in a year is 4%.
Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm just trying to figure out if this strategically could benefit us in the sense of dropping it, raising it, and going after forgone, and really not ever raising taxes in the next year.
Yeah, one clarification is if you reduce your tax base by this 708,000, that can't go into forgone.
Right.
Only the 708 you're electing not to take this year can go into forgone.
Counselor Specklemeyer?
So can I ask Counselor Forstman a question?
You may, if she'll answer.
With all these numbers, I'm a little lost, I'm a little slow. So what you're asking is a 3% decrease in the budget, the property tax base, but you want it all to come from that Assigned Building Fund?
Correct. And we're moving the remaining into the capital.
Instead of just flat across every department?
Yes, instead of flat across every department.
Can we have a bathroom recess?
Counselor, but it is. We still got three hours till midnight.
And that's been our longest.
I'm going to go to the bathroom.
I'm just going to the bathroom.
Just a little common law. City Attorney. Actually.
I
Would have normally been funded by taking that amount out. Is there anything specifically that you can say?
I mean, the I, in my presentation earlier, I had the specific language that is in city code regarding that fund. And so each year council can appropriate the money that's in that fund to be put towards a project that fits within the criteria of that.
That's kind of what I, thank you, just reaffirming, we've gone along over a lot of territories, so I just wanted to, thank you, backup.
Councilor Towesley.
Yeah, I appreciate the symbolism and the gesture of the three percent reduction, but the thing I hear from people is that we've got a lot of roads that need fixing and any any amount of money that we can get a hold of to put into that, if we're showing a gesture that we're trying to get this done, we need every penny we can get. And so I would not support reducing that three percent. I would like to go with the original. What did it do? Fixing the roads.
Further counsel comments? Okay, we will vote on the amended substitute motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. We will now vote on the substitute motion and Clerk Rocky, can you read the substitute motion for us?
Wait a minute. That's her, Mayor. This is my motion. Yeah. Okay.
Or the amended motion, I'm sorry, yeah.
He said substitute and I panicked, but voted wrong.
Is motion to approve the first reading of ordinance forty-eight ninety-four by reducing the building reserve fund from the general fund by one point six million or one point six-five million and move it to increase the capital projects fund by one point six-five million.
Hey, councilors, that's the motion. Apologize that I got mixed up there. Is there discussion?
You'd say that, I can't hear.
Sure, a counselor or Clerk Rocky, if you could just repeat that and maybe of your loud voice for everyone up here, make sure, and those at home listening too.
Sorry. So the motion was to approve the first reading of ordinance forty-eight ninety-four by reducing the building reserve fund from the general fund by one point six-five million and move it to increase the capital projects fund by one point six-five million.
Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk Rocky.
Not ready.
Approving the first reading of ordinance forty-eight ninety-four, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston to be termed a twenty-twenty-four annual appropriation ordinance, appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, councilors, next up, we have item L, public hearing, Brighton Canyon Golf Course fees, accepting testimony on a proposal to restate, amend, remove, and establish fees for the Brighton Canyon Golf Course effective October one, twenty-twenty-three. Again, I will open the public hearing. We'll have staff presentation, testimony from the public, council questions, and we'll close the public hearing. So I will now open the public hearing and accepting testimony on a proposal to restate, amend, and remove and establish fees for the Brighton Canyon Golf Course effective October one, twenty-twenty-three. Director Barker, you have the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for giving me some time this evening. I will try to not not take too much of yours. I have six minutes before I can get another hour of standing, so you got me for at least six minutes. What I will talk to me, great. Um, I'm going to run through our proposed fee increases for Brighton Canyon Golf Course. And then I will open up for some comments and then obviously, any questions that you may have following this presentation. So I've combined both of Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty, which is Brighton Canyon Golf Fees, and then twenty-twenty-three dash forty-two is for Normal Hill Cemetery, and so I will take a break in between those two, just so you're aware. As you all know, last September, we went through the public hearing process to establish fees at Brighton Canyon Golf Course for the first time in quite some time since the city has managed, self-managed the course. And so the prior fee is what was agreed upon and supported at our public hearing, I believe it was September twenty-sixth of twenty-two. So over this last year, with Course Go in place, we've looked at our current fee structure, our current usage, and then come up with proposal for some increases to our standard fees. So what you see here is the annual season passes. I won't run through each one of them, save you a little bit, but you can tell that there's slight increases to most of them, junior passes, there's no increase. But otherwise, we have some some minimal increases here and there to the various annual passes that we provide as options. And then within our daily fees, you can see some slight increases as well to those, both for our eighteen-hole and our nine-hole fees and some very minimal increases. I do want to point out that we did, we are going to, at the end of September, eliminate the LCSC student and faculty with ID, so we will combine them now with the college student rate with ID. So there was a separate agreement that was in place with LCSC that will no longer continue after the end of September. And all of those students will be roped in with the college student rate, which is fifteen for eighteen holes. And with that, just to note, that does not include the cart. They do pay regular rates for cart rental. Uh, let's see, junior rates, you'll see where the paid adult, so a child can play that seventeen and under with an adult that pays the full price. That was some clarification as well. Previously, it wasn't real clear, especially when we had that LCSC rate. If you were faculty and had a child, it did not specifically address adults and it now does. Rental clubs, just to note, we were charging fifteen dollars for rental clubs. We don't rent a whole lot of clubs up there. At this time, our clubs need to be upgraded. And so what we've done is we've been selling off the clubs that we have there. We aren't going to have clubs at this time and we'll reevaluate that over this next year and look at bringing in some new clubs and then raising that club rental rate. So the cart fees, you see those for trail fees. So you've got options for if you want to rent one of our carts, two-seaters or per seat, you see those prices there. And then a trail fee if you provide your own carts. That trail fee goes towards projects like trail fee or trail improvement, so the cart improvement. And then the daily trail fee, if you were to come in and pay a daily rate and bring your own cart with you. So here are rental fees for daily carts. Just as note, so you're aware, this is the last year of the current cart agreement. That was in place that we inherited from the previous operator and we have negotiated new cart rates. And so those carts would be coming online for us next November. And the pole carts, no fee change there. And then the fin scooters are motorcycle-looking scooters that you can rent out. Those are obviously a little bit more expensive and so nine-hole and eighteen-hole prices are listed there. Just as a note, the fin scooters are carts that we do own. The other carts, we have thirty carts that are rented or leased and then fifteen additional cart that are owned. So we have four fin scooters and fifteen carts that the city does own. These part storage fees, some slight changes there. Old barn is the the large barn that we had the electrical work done this last spring. And we changed some wording that was in there to try to clarify, make things a little bit easier to understand. The portable barns are those one and two cart storage barns that are on the exterior of the old barn. And then what we call the parking lot are the cart storage areas that have no electricity, so it's just gas carts only on the north side of the parking lot. And then we have separate range passes if you want to have annual range passes. So both with seasonal and then without. And then our separate range ball fees, just a slight increase in the large basket. And then corporate passes. There's two different options that we provide. We had looked at eliminating these, but we did see and feel that there was enough interest to continue these. One of those corporate passes is for a company. If they wanted to purchase the thirty individual or three hundred individual, they would receive three hundred daily passes. And then the day pass with date is basically a pass. So if I gave you a pass that was for August fifteenth and it didn't get used, then you can't renew it for another day. It has to be used on that specific day. So all of these fees, if the resolution moves forward, would supersede Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-two and Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-six. We had two separate resolutions last fall because there was one fee when we went through the initial process that we had accidentally left out. So that following week, we did have that second. So these would all be moved into one resolution move forward. So that's all I have for golf at the moment.
Is there anyone from the public to testify tonight? Any councilors, questions?
Air motion.
Counselor.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, nevermind.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Turn the page. Next is Item M, Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty, considering restating, amending, removing, and establishing city of Lewiston Parks Recreation Department fees for Brighton Canyon Golf Course effective October one, twenty-twenty-three. This is an action item.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Towesley.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty.
Second.
Removed by Counselor Towesley, second by Counselor Littke to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty. Is there discussion? Clerk Brockie.
Council President Littke.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Specklemyer.
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next up, item N, public hearing, Normal Hill Cemetery Fees, Accepting Testimony on the Restating and Amending of Fees for the Normal Hill Cemetery effective October one, twenty-twenty-three. Again, I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation, accept testimony from the public. If there is any entertained questions from the council, then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, accepting testimony on restating and amending fees for the Normal Hill Cemetery effective October one, twenty-twenty-three. Director Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Barker, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. As stated, Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty-two would restate and amend fees at Normal Hill Cemetery. This would replace two separate resolutions, previously two thousand and six dash fifty and two thousand and sixteen dash fifty-seven. One piece that I want to note out that I believe you did receive some information regarding, I'm going to really focus today on the regarding, I'm gonna really focus today on the opening and closing fees. But we are restating fees that are in place now related to grave fees. What had happened since, I believe it's 2016-57, was we had incrementally below 5% made some small increases related to our 2015 master plan for the Normal Hill Cemetery. In my head, my understanding was that we didn't have to go through the resolution process if it was less than 5%. But we do, it's the public hearing that needed to be gone through if it was above 5%. So we had been making some small increases since 2017. So what you have listed in your packet, as far as the prior fee and the new fee for grave fees, you'll see in there that they're exactly the same. What we're doing is we're just going through and making sure that we have those stated correctly within a resolution and will be established moving forward. And then as we go to moving those and increasing those rates in the future, those will continue to be coming back to you, whether there's a public hearing attached to the process or not. Opening and closing fees, what really spurred us to move forward with the opening and closing fees at the cemetery? Again, these are not the preneed when you've purchased the grave fees. These are when you are putting a loved one to rest, is really what the opening and close fees revolve around. So we were approached by Wilbert, who is our, provides our grave services and then our digging services. Those aren't items that we do internally, we contract that out. Our fees have not increased from Wilbert's for a number of years. They have new management in place. With these proposed fees that you'll see on here, it still shows about a 30% less fee that they would be charging us at Normal Hill versus their other sites. But we were getting drastically discounted prior to, and when I was asked why, I just really told them I wasn't complaining. I knew that their fees elsewhere were increasing, but really didn't know why we weren't being kept up to pace with their other facilities. So we received a good deal previously from Wilbert's, and they've been a partner of ours with providing that service for us for about 20 years at the cemetery. So what we're doing here is the established fee that they've increased, we're essentially increasing that into the new fee and passing that on. So any of those fees that are related to Wilbert's, that's what, why it jumps. And some of them, you know, unfortunately are fairly drastic. So I'll just take a, for example, you know, double-depth adult, the first burial formerly was 898, I believe is what that says. And then is now 1318. So we aren't receiving anything additional. We're just passing on what the company that provides that service for us is going to be charging us starting October 1. So again, not to go through all of these fees specifically, but these are, you know, opening and closing for the different style of graves that we have available. We do, we are increasing a couple of our fees that are city fees, so our staking fee of $54, we're increasing to 60. The quick claim fee going from 27 to 30, so small increases. And then the cremation disinterment fee, so that's moving from 206 to 220. Again, working off of the 2015 master plan, including some inflation since then, trying to keep pace with those that are out there in the business as well elsewhere. I guess I was on a couple slides. So with that, I'll close my comments.
Are there citizen comments? Testimony, I should say. Councilors, council questions? Counselor Towesley?
I need to know what a quitclaim fee is. What, what's a quitclaim when it comes to a burial? Or?
So it limits, or it's just paperwork? Processing fee?
Mayor?
Counselor Littke?
So, really, our revenue is still, I'm just trying to figure out, and I appreciate that we got a deal. However, we, how do these fees help us manage? Because we still have to use taxpayer dollars to fund, continually fund perpetual care. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around the overall benefit to the city for us to, I mean, if we have to pass through those fees, and I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the benefits because we've talked about privatization. We're really not, we're not helping indigent. We're, we're literally running a cemetery business. So these increases, I'm assuming are market comparable to other cemeteries? So is this going to help decrease our costs? Or are we just trying to raise it to kind of come up to speed? Where are we at with the cemetery? Because I'm, I'm confused as to the benefit that it's bringing.
Sure, no, that's a good question. Thank you for asking that. For one, I'll just mention, Wilbert's, we've looked at every couple of years, look at what fees are charged by the service that they're providing to us versus the number of burials that we're doing currently in the developed portion of the cemetery. It's still less expensive to have that done by a third party, because otherwise, we would have our own equipment, we would have staffing. So it doesn't make sense for us to do any of that internally. So they provide the digging services, but then they also provide the tents and the setup for the funeral services that do occur on site. Again, those are services that are still less expensive because of the number of burials that we're doing than us doing that in-house. I think the biggest question we need to look at moving forward as far as operating of the cemetery is we are getting to the point where we're going to be full soon of our developed portion. And unless we start putting funding more towards cremations and niches and doing infill in our current developed area, we really have to figure out what we're going to do long-term with the undeveloped, about six and a half acres along Southway. We can increase all the fees that we want right now within the regular grave fees, but we're not selling graves because we don't have the inventory right now. So that's why we're kind of, right now focusing on the site that we have some control over. So let's say that we have capacity for about 20,000 burials. We probably have over 19,000 buried now at this point, so very low inventory available. We've got a buyback program that a few people have taken advantage of to try to help us open back up some of our resources. But to me, that's the biggest question moving forward is ultimately, the cemetery, you want to survive off of the perpetual care funds that you receive when you sell graves. We're not selling graves, so that perpetual care fund isn't really getting much put into it at this point. Money's already been collected, and now we have to utilize the funds that are in there and hope that our investment continues to increase. Obviously, we saw some decreases the last couple of years. We're hoping that rebounds, but we're still a long ways from being able to rely on that $150,000 subsidy that we're taking from the general fund to be able to help offset those, those, those expenses. So to me, it's looking at how do we move forward, increase revenues at the site. We can plan and make it interactive and recreational with, with the recreation side of things and have programs based out of there as much as we can. But really, it's the inventory moving forward. And personally, I feel more in the cremation end because we're close to 70, 72% cremations in the community. That's really where we need to look at as a market is concerned moving forward. Obviously, that's the most expensive way to, to develop, is to build up and have cremation areas, but it also gives you a much higher return.
Thank you.
Director, I do have a quick question. As I pulled some information on the Normal Hill Cemetery. Yeah, I know we're gonna bring this up in a work session soon, talk about that property and fees and stuff like that. But as I look at some of the grave fees here, for example, mausoleum crypts, rows one through four, rows five through six have not changed since 2006. And then when I look at single-depth, double-depth adult, if my math is correct, from 2006 to 2023, now that you're proposing over that time period, we're looking at less than a 5% increase in fees total, yet our CPI indices are over 50% during that same time period. Why, why do we not increase our grave fees, for example, to stay up with things like the Consumer Price Index, or is this just something else in the market that we don't measure, or it just, it's not influenced by CPI? Because from that, if we look at that fee, and in fact, I don't know, rather than answering the question, why don't I just ask the question? Because that, that new fee of 1220, you put a portion of that fee into the perpetual care fund as well, which is different, I think, than how it's done in our private cemetery town. So could you just address the CPI and then the perpetual care fund portion of that?
Yeah, and looking forward, my recommendation in the future when looking at grave fees would be increasing those grave fees and having it more reflected on the perpetual care as opposed to some of the other breakdowns. I will tell you, the mausoleum crypt fees have not gone up because we're very limited. There's only a couple of them in there left, and I don't think we've put anybody into one of those interior crypts for probably 30 years or so. So there's not a demand for it. We're not seeing anybody wanting to be in that space. Interior for the cremations, on the other hand, there is more of a demand for that. But again, there's not a whole lot of supply available. The mausoleum is much more compact than the main part of the cemetery. As far as not keeping up with the CPI, part of that, when we went through that process in 2015 with the master plan, was their recommendation was to not drastically increase it because we were competitive at that rate that we were at that time. So that's really, 2014, 15 is really when I started digging in after being the director for a couple of years into the cemetery to really analyze what we have at that site. And again, our consultants at the time did not recommend that we increase those because we were already where the, the competition was at.
Okay, well, I have some information I'll just share with you at another time, because I looked at the private cemeteries in town too. So, but thank you. Councilors? I will close the public hearing. Then we'll move on to item O, Resolution 2023-42, Considering Restating and Amending Fees for the Normal Hill Cemetery effective October 1, 2023. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-42.
Been moved by Counsel Schreiber, second by Counsel Kleberg to approve Resolution 2023-42. Is there discussion? Your non-clerk Brockie?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next, we'll move into Roman numeral five, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council is so requested, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Counselor Littke?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Littke, second by Counsel Forsman to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Clerk Brockie?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next, we'll move to Roman numeral six, Active Agenda, item A, Resolution 2023-35, Considering Restating and Amending Community Development Department Fees effective October 1, 2023. This is an action item, not a public hearing, but an action item. And we have Director Groh with us here from Community Development. Welcome, Director. Thank you for staying so late with us. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Shannon Groh, Community Development Director. Resolution 2023-35 does three things. It's in, it's page 91 of your packets tonight. First, it does look at all the fees and combine community development fees into one resolution. Previously, they had been split into two resolutions. So we decided, because we were coming before you tonight, to go ahead and combine them all into one resolution. It also removes the language for the automatic CPI increase that were, was previously in for community development fees. And so what that means is that there is no automatic increase. The fees will be examined by the council every year. We have to come before you whether or not we do something, so we might as well not make the assumption of the CPI and come to you with a resolution. The third thing it does is that it does not increase any community development fees, with the exception of planning and zoning fees. Staff did research and looked at the fees for comparable cities for plant, for building, and between that and inflation, decided that a 0% increase was to be proposed tonight as well as looking at planning and zoning fees. And we were drastically under with planning and zoning fees. So we are recommending the 5%, which is the CPI this year on planning and zoning fees.
Thank you, Director. Councilors? Counselor Schroeder?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-35.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Littke to approve Resolution 2023-35. Is there discussion? Counselor Littke?
Quickly, I'd like to commend the community development staff and, and Mayor for doing the research. I think this is a well-thought-out plan. It does not take away from our ability to promote new business or changes as people and businesses see fit. Just well done.
Thank you, Counselor. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next up on the active agenda, item B, Resolution 2023-44, Considering Conveying Ownership of a Genesis Hydraulic Explication Tool, 60 Feet of Hydraulic Hose and a Honda Hydraulic Pump to the City of Sooton, Washington. This is an action item. We have our chief with us here tonight, Chief Wrightmeyer. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Greg Wrightmeyer, interim fire chief. The item before you is a surplus item for the fire department. It's an older rescue tool that has a separate power unit and is corded, where nowadays we use electronic battery-powered tools. But we did find, rather than send this to surplus, to be able to surplus to the City of Sooton Fire Department, which is a smaller department, doesn't have a lot of resources, this tool would allow them to be able to, as they are, they precede our medic units and our rescue unit arriving, to gain access to patients that are stuck in cars and begin giving care prior to the arrival of a more complete set of tools. So figured this was a good thing to keep in our community and improve the service level to some of the citizens.
Thank you, chief. And then just for the public record, the value. That's $2,000 there. If you just say $2,000.
$2,000. $2,000.
That was 2,000, not 7,000, right?
That's correct. But above. 225, who give me three, four, we got five in the back, okay.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I just want to commend our fire department. And for the public, maybe if they do or do not know, but they, we service all in the community, and Clarkston and Lewiston help each other out, and Sooton, and so we are together in one, trying to make sure that we have adequate firemen there when fires happen and paramedics available. And so I gratitude that we don't just help ourselves, but we help our surrounding communities to make sure that they are also getting assistance and that their citizens are also taken care of, and I just, I think it really speaks to our fire department and how much dedication they have towards the job. So this is, this is a well thought out plan. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, side note, a perfect example of that was this last weekend when the city of Sooton had a structured fire, and we had engines from County of Sooton, City of Clarkston, City of Lewiston, several units, the command team and so forth there. So yeah, it, when a, when a problem hits us in the valley, we all work together to solve the problem, and that's, that's how it should be.
Counselor Schroeder?
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion's in order.
Move to approve Resolution 2023-44.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-44. Is there further discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Litke?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, chief, for being here. Next up, counselors, we have item C, Resolution 2023-49, considering restating and amending EMS services fees effective October 1, 2023. We have back with us.
They don't go away, don't go away. They don't go away yet.
Chief Wrightmeyer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Greg Wrightmeyer, interim fire chief. This resolution that's before you is coming from your Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board. This community board, every other year conducts a fee study and then makes recommendations to the council, trying to stay with the the policy and guidelines of MSAB to provide services for our city residents and our ambulance fees that are resilient, that are competency based and are reliable, so that when people call 911 or they call for non emergency transport, they know that they're going to get that service and to keep that affordable as well. We historically have kept our rates far below the competitive rates even in here in the valley, but certainly up as you head north. And so in that, that's, that fee study was done two years ago, the recommendation was to look at increasing those fees. The 4% is what was recommended and to do that 2% last year and 2% this year. As we've brought on our ambulance billing company this year and learning a lot about people that just have more experience with Medicare, Medicaid, insurance billing and so forth, it came to our attention that the way that we had billed, while it had a small town feel to it, to specifically bill each individual patient for consumables, oxygen tubing and things like that, that really, the standard of the industry is to bundle that and have just a flat fee, so every patient gets the same. When we did an analysis of that with our ambulance billing folks, they, they saw that there would be a decrease in what we had budgeted for and made a recommendation or provided the information to MSAB that a half a percent increase on top of that 2% would flatten that difference back out. And so the recommendation for you is a two and a half percent increase over the current rate for this year, and then next year we'll do another fee study. Stand for questions.
Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-49.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-49, is there discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Litke?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and also thank you to the EMS Advisory Board members, they're not, not here, but our advisory boards are wonderful, as you all well know, the time that they put in, and in the future, EMS services in the valley are going to be something that have to be addressed, and the service or the advisory board, we're going to ask a lot out of them, and they're going to be in communication with you folks as we kind of re undertake the EMS strategic plan that was done in 2011, and look at that again and ask ourselves, are we still doing the best job for our citizens?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, counselors, we have item D, Resolution 2023-47, considering declaring that the real property and building located at 805 Sixth Avenue in Lewiston, Idaho, commonly known as the Ann Bolandshire Performing Arts Center's surplus the city of Lewiston's needs, and not used for public purposes, declaring a minimum purchase price of $67,000, directing the city clerk to schedule a public hearing regarding the proposed sale of such property. This is an action item, it's got my name on it. Well, I think all of us know a little bit about the history of this building. Previously, during a work session, a member of the Save the Bolandshire group, Matt Wiedler, spoke for the group and asked that we consider surplusing this property to see if there were any interested buyers out there. So this is the result of that effort. We did list a minimum price on here of $67,000.
I see, yep, 67,000 even.
And then we have listing, at least I brought a listing of the expenses from September 30 of 2020 to, well, from April 26 of 2017 through September 30 of 2020, which totals $65,862.30. That's referenced in the resolution at the bottom of page 112, if you have any questions.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Forsman?
One question. When, I'm, I'm still trying to get the hang of when we sell properties off, but we had to set a minimum amount, right, at first, as far as code goes? So we're like, we have to fit to this kind of amount that we set. Thank you.
Counselor Townsley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-47, declaring that the real property and building located at 805 Sixth Avenue is surplus to the city of Lewiston's needs and not used for public purposes, and declaring a minimum purchase price of $67,000 that the city council intends to receive by selling such property at a public auction.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Townsley, second by Counsel Litke to approve Resolution 2023-47, declaring that the real property and building located at 805 Sixth Avenue is surplus to the city of Lewiston's needs and not used for public purposes, and declaring a minimum purchase price of $67,000 that the city council intends to receive by selling such property at public auction. Is there further discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Litke?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have item E, ordinances, first reading, number one, A, ordinance 4895, considering fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification of the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, in the amount of $23,476,970, providing a certified copy of the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. This is an action item. Schroeder?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4895.
Second.
Been moved by Counsel Schroeder, second by Counsel Litke to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4895, is there discussion? amendments, if any? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose?
Nay.
Clerk Rocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance number 4895, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, for the corporate purposes, oh, sorry, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, in the amount of $23,476,970, providing a certified copy of the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. We'll jump over Roman numeral seven. We did not move anything from the consent agenda. We'll move to Roman numeral eight, unfinished new business. Item A, city council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussions. Counselor comments?
Mayor?
Counsel Forsman?
The campaign packets are out for those who wish to run for city council on the city website. I wish those that are going to run the best of luck with their campaigning and glad to see those in the community eager to run and serve our great city of Lewiston. I also want to extend my ear to those who may need help or just want to reach out, ask questions, are curious about things. I'm here, and please reach out to me. I know when I ran, it was, it was quite the experience, so it was nice to know that there was counselors currently on the council and, and previous counselors that I was able to reach out to and ask questions about, to make sure that it was the right move for me and my family. So if you need to do that, please reach out to me. I'm excited to see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Other council comments? Counsel Townsley?
Yeah, and a related note, I wanted to offer some thoughts on my decision not to be on the ballot for reelection in November. No one really knows how many trips they go around the sun, and as I grow older, I wish to spend more time with my family and friends. Lewiston citizens, if you're interested in being on the Lewiston City Council, please know this, we have a vibrant city and it deserves a vibrant city council. These staff members I work with are knowledgeable, dedicated, and always accessible. Use them. Ask lots of questions. Diligent, make no assumptions about how things are done. Research, research, research. Reliable, verifiable sources. And avoid social media feeding frenzies. They are usually emotionally driven and often by writers that are more interested in being clever than being accurate. They are not the heartbeat of the city. And also expect to work and have some very late meetings. I also have to add that the hardest part of my making this decision is knowing that I will not see these people as I do now. I will miss them. That gives people an opportunity for money. I wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Also comments? Okay, city boards and commission liaison updates.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor?
Counsel Schroeder?
Thank you. Before my mind goes, we did have our meeting on the comprehensive plan update on Envision Lewiston 2044, and there are surveys out there if you, for you to assist us in that, and if you would go to the city website and look for those surveys, they're, they're in there, and we greatly appreciate that. We're working on, right now, we've got the different neighborhoods in Lewiston, and we're looking at how that should continue and how it should look in the future as how we put that into the comp plan. So it's very interesting, and you work with a comprehensive plan, well, I did on my five years of planning and zoning, and we see it a little bit here on council, but it's there and it's a tool that we, we work with. So it's very interesting. So take a look at that and please fill out the, any survey we can, and tell your neighbors to do it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Litke?
Yes, I would like to commend the Airport Authority Board on their recent announcement of the addition or the re-add of direct flights to, from Lewiston to Seattle and back. In fact, we have an arrival at 7:00 AM, excuse me, a departure to Seattle at 7:00 AM, and then an arrival in the evening, so folks will be able to access one more hub. And I am just, you know, the history of Lewiston has a lot of stories, and I think that this is one that we should all be proud of, that being as small as we are as a community, and we're, we share this with the county, but we share it with the entire valley, that the use of this airport is not something that everybody in the state of Idaho, even the Pacific Northwest, has access to. And I, for one, am just ecstatic to see that we did this with diligence and relationships that have continued to build, that it was no cost for this flight to come back. We did not have to subsidize this flight, and I just, I'm over the moon excited to see what this does over time to our airline prices and holding our regionals accountable for their prices. It's, it really is something that we should be proud of and take pride in our ownership.
Mayor?
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Forsman?
The liaison, liaison update for, I'm also on the Public Works Committee. Some of the exciting things we'll be going over, composting, it's very exciting, in September, is the timeline that we're hoping to go over that, going over the CIP plan in October, maybe, and kind of really diving into that and seeing if we need to change that or look into that. Speed limits in November to, and maybe looking at if you need more signs. So those are kinds of some things to come. Last thing is the landfill and the MS4 permit in January, so hopefully to get ahead for the following year with those. But yeah, so if you could come to that, that is every second Wednesday of the month at the Bell Building at noon. It's a lot of information, and I've gotten to learn a lot, and there's a lot of knowledgeable people in that group. So it's, it's a really utilized, we're still getting their feet in the ground and figuring it out, but it's a, a good tool that we have in the toolbox, I think, now. So exciting to see what those discussions are going to come about.
Thank you, counselor. Counsel comments, none? Okay. Mayor comments? Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Director, to Director Gordon and her staff. They have been working very hard to bring you this budget, and also to our Public Information Officer, who's worked very well getting the information out and publishing. That, it's been a big help, and I think we do a pretty good job. I think we're very transparent, it's very complete, it's good data, and it's now up to the council to take it and do something with it. Then I also want to just pass along to our Community Development Director, I've been receiving some positive comments, but not only that, phone calls and messages on my phone. So people are taking the time to, out of their day to call and say thank you for the job that you're doing, so I'll pass that on to you. I don't think I've shared that with you, although I have them on my voice message here, and I play it over and over again, and then, but I will for you. And then lastly, I want to thank the citizens for staying with us here tonight.
Yeah, for one night.
Being a part of your government, it's important, and we don't usually get that, and over here too, Mr. Funky, it's great to have you here, so thank you for being with us tonight. Advisory board commission appointments, we don't have. Agenda topics, counselors?
Can I interrupt a minute?
Counselors?
I think that our, one of our legal has had an award, and I forgot to mention that in comments. And so she wasn't here, and I planned to congratulate her on it, and Jennifer had been written up, I can't remem, I don't say her last name often enough, how do I say it? Tegano. Anyway, Jennifer Tegano, never mind, it's too late, has gotten an award for pro bono, thank you for the word. Anyway, so yes, and we're very proud of her. pro bono. Thank you for the word. Anyway, so yes, and we're very proud of her. She's a great addition to our legal team. So thank you very much, Jennifer. Oh, she's in Hawaii, so.
Enjoying her reward.
Enjoying her reward. So anyway, thank you for going back.
Thank you, counselors. Agenda topics. Counsel Litke? No? Okay. All right. Brings us to Roman numeral nine, adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second? Oh, no, I wanted to.
Second by Counsel Forsman to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Thank you.
No.